So I'm going to call this National Board of Education meeting to order. It is Monday, August 21st, 2023, and it is 6:02 PM. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lamphier, I'm sure will be happy. Everyone will know that she is at a Guns N' Roses concert tonight.
Right.
I am incredibly jealous. But Ms. Raymond has offered to be clerk. So Ms. Raymond, can you please call the roll?
No problem. Ms. Darling?
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Odin? Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Gilio?
Here.
We also have Dr. Andreid, Dr. Sarvati, Mr. Pasca. Mr. Donovan is not here. And tonight, we have Mr. Castellano. At Box for...
After you do the prayer, Ms. Gilio, will you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. This brings us up to our first meeting on the bullet on the agenda, the special education audit. I would like to welcome Toby Chassie and John Friedman up to the podium with Dan Alexander to begin presentations.
Thank you very much. Good evening, folks. My name is John Freeman, and my colleague Toby Chassie and I had the honor of working in your school district to conduct an evaluation of special education programs. We'd like to provide you with a brief introduction to us and then touch on four, excuse me, three aspects of our report. One is to talk to you very briefly and describe the overall process. Two, to describe briefly the findings. And three, to reference the recommendations. I know from your school board packets that you've received not only a summary but also a complete copy of our report. So it will be helpful that you have received that and hopefully have had a chance to look at it, but I'll orient you to that report in my presentation. Toby?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, just to reiterate.
Turn the mic.
Mike, I'm sorry. It was an absolute pleasure to be working in the Nashua School District during the spring months. We were very happy to be here. We met some wonderfully dedicated special ed, regular educators alike. So thank you for that opportunity. I am a retired director of student services, director of special education. I was in the field of special education for about 47 years, 30 of which as a director. Very active in the New Hampshire Association of Special Administrators. I am current, I retired but could not leave, which happens to many of us, I guess. So I have been doing some consulting in special education since leaving as well as working now UNH, working to help increase the number of special education teachers that are coming into the field. So hopefully that's serving some purpose there. So thank you.
And again, my name is John Freeman. Toby and I have worked together for a long time, first as collaborating administrators in the Pittsfield School District or as a school principal and superintendent. I served a community of Pittsfield for 21 years. Between the two of us, we have nearly 100 years in public education. So I think it's like 70 and 20. Is that right? But we've been around, we've seen a lot. I've worked in, as a teacher, in the elementary school and middle school and as a principal in elementary school and middle school grades as well, and retired as a superintendent of schools. In terms of the project process, we were very enthused to be invited to a meeting by district leadership to talk a little bit about the possibility of us conducting a special education program audit. And we introduced the district leadership at that time to a document and a protocol known as the Program Evaluation Guidelines. And this Program Evaluation Guidelines includes 14 elements. Those 14 elements would be considered elements for any program that would be high functioning. So for example, the first element that you'll read about is a, is purpose. And so we know if we have a statement of purpose, the likelihood that we'll actually achieve the purpose is enhanced. And that's true of any program, special education program, an athletic program, you know, student driving program, English Language Arts, any kind of program that you would think about. The administrators told us that there were two main reasons for inviting us in at this time. One was the opportunity that's created by a change in leadership in the district. And my, it's our understanding that there were some significant changes in the school district leadership. And the other main point is that the administrators acknowledged to us that there was some inconsistency observed in programs, both across the district from school to school and vertically for students as they go through the system. Not all that unusual, but more complicated, of course, in a larger district such as yours compared to Pittsfield, a very small school district. We see the purpose of the evaluation serving those purposes. We think the findings will provide an opportunity to learn from the experience of educators. And so we were very happy to speak with over 100 of your educators here in the Nashua School District, teachers, paraprofessionals, and related service providers. And so the opportunity to hear from those folks who are on the ground doing the job on a daily basis was important. We also believe a study of this type can facilitate informed decision making. It brings together some key concepts for the leadership and the school board in terms of considering how we get from A to B, considering that this would be A, and how do we make things better? And lastly, it provides, especially a governing board, the assurance of resource, effective resource use and professional use. Really provides a level of accountability. In terms of our process, we had originally hoped to speak with the faculty and staff of each school in an after-school meeting at each individual school, but that didn't work out. And so we did what we thought was the next best thing. And at the guidance of the administration, we set a time for each elementary school, a date in which Toby or I, or both of us, were present in the school for the entire day to interact with the faculty and staff who would be interested on a volunteer basis. We also met middle school teachers in an after-school. The principals arranged for a meeting of all middle school teachers, and Toby and I were there for that. We also visited one of the middle schools for an all-day session. And in the high schools, the principals and the leadership teams asked us to arrange for an after-school time. And so what we did was we met at these various convenings of faculty and staff. Again, it was not only teachers, special education, regular education, but paraprofessionals and related service providers who had volunteered to do this, hoping to get a broad spectrum of opinions. And what we wanted to do is gain both quantitative and qualitative information about your system. And so we provided each of them with a brief explanation of the protocol, which we estimate will take, takes about an hour and a half to complete. And we also then asked them to give freely of their comments and opinions and positions, feelings about how the program is going from their perspective. So we ended up with those two sorts of data. We ended up, as I mentioned, and as you may have read in the report, we had just barely over 100, I think it was 103, protocols returned to us. We encouraged folks, if they kind of ran out of steam, because an hour and a half is a lot of time to carve out of your day if you're a teacher and the month is May. And so we said to folks, if you can only complete some of it, we'll take it. And so we gave everyone a deadline of one week and got over 100 back. We'd hoped to get more. The sample is small, but we think that the small sample and the intensity of the feeling and the spirit with which we saw in folks, it gives us and gives the district some places to start. We think that there are relative strengths that are identified as well as shortcomings. Our findings then are described around each element in the, in the, in the report. So what we did is provided each element, again, starting with something as an example, the purpose of the program, with a definition of what that element should be, a guiding question, what people should be thinking about when thinking about that particular element, an element evaluation. We wanted the participants to vote on and rate each of the, each of those elements on a three-point scale. We asked them how important it is to address each of those elements and what the urgency is, and a description as well as select written comments. We were really pleased and yet at the same time overwhelmed with the number of written comments. And if you've gone through the pages of the report, I think that was the thickest section of the report was, were the comments. And I thank Toby for spending about eight million hours pulling those, those comments out. Yep, okay. Let me move on then to, to the actual findings, which begin on, for folks of you who, those of you who would have the, the report in front of you, begin on page, that's where I was to begin with, sorry, page six. And so you see, one of the four, the first of these elements is a statement of purpose. And so we provide a definition, a statement of why the program exists and how it creates value for stakeholders. So you would look for any of your programs to have this, why are we doing this? And what's the value? What's the point of it? What's the value for the stakeholders? And thinking of stakeholders in the broadest sense. And so you think, of course, of anything in a school, one of the chief stakeholders would be the students who are receiving of direct services. But stakeholders includes anyone who would have an interest in that program. So of course, students' parents and family would have an interest. Educators would have an interest, people within the system. The school board, of course, would have an interest on multiple levels, but not the least of which is in terms of accountability. Is this program doing what it's supposed to be doing? And is it worth the resources that we're putting into it? And are the resources sufficient to complete the, the purpose of the program? A guiding question, so for purpose, the guiding question is, is the purpose statement reflective and fully inclusive of the intent of the program originators? Is it doing here what special education, generally speaking, is supposed to be doing? And is it easily understood by all stakeholders it will impact? So all of the stakeholders easily understand and now, and have knowledge in the purpose of special education here in the Nashua School District. We then asked folks, as I mentioned, to give it a rating. So is the statement of purpose exemplary? Is it proficient or does it need improvement? And we provided a rubric for each of these, as you'll see in the document in the appendix. And so folks could actually look at behavioral descriptors of what each of these elements and which of these ratings might be. And so for example, in terms of statement of purpose, 7% of the 100 said that it was exemplary. 38% said proficient, and 55% needs improvement. In terms of the urgency for action, each of these came across, each of these 14 elements came across that are in the middle range. We provided a, a brief discussion, and then we provided examples of selected written comments. And if you looked at some of those sections of written comments, you'll see that the written comments are kind of all over the place. And so we found that they, they really was a lack of consistency in terms of how people were seeing the program. And it could be, depends on who they were, where they were, what part of the role they had. We did, we did that for each of these 14 elements, and you have those descriptions there. We're happy to answer questions at the conclusion of this brief, is it too long already? This brief, this brief presentation. In the summary, which we provide over on page 14 of our report, we identified relative strengths and, and areas that might suggest priorities for improvement. So in terms of the strengths, the top three strengths were deliverables, program outcomes, were team functioning, very important. And those of you who have direct experience in the special education process know how critical team functioning is. And content, so the stuff, the curriculum and the methodologies used. So those were the top rated out of these 14 elements. On the flip side, those areas that were suggested to have a greater, greater need for development were resources, probably not a surprise to most folks. Policy support, looking to make sure that both school board policies, school district policies, as well as policies and practices at the individual schools were aligned and were supporting the purpose of the program. And sustainability, if we keep going the way we're going, is where are we going to continue to get better and better results? So those were the three, those three areas that seemed to be, create the most need in terms of the respondents. So our recommendations include several. One, number one, of course, is commitment. And we believe that we were very uplifted by our conversations with, with the teachers in the schools and the, and the paraprofessionals and related service providers. And we believe from the folks we've talked and talked to, that it really is an optimal time for making some significant changes and improvements to your special education services. So we believe that commitment to improve special education is, is an important leadership function, and it's an important function of, in my opinion, the governing board as well as lead administrators. Number two, we suggest that you verify the findings in, and that might be done across a variety of stakeholder groups. Because our sample is small, we're not 100% confident that this represents with, with 100% accuracy everything within the district. And so we think it would be important for this district to convene various groups of individuals, and it would be up to, up to you who those, what that would look like, could be a lot of different ways. But thinking of all the stakeholder groups, again, students, particularly older students who have been through the process, educators, community members, parents, et cetera, to verify it is, do these findings make sense? We strongly recommend you take a look at that also. We also recommend that these findings provide you with a, with a, with a, with a baseline of information, with a baseline of data. And so if, starting today, you accept these findings as somewhat valid and say, let's, we're going to come back and do this again in a few years, three years, five years, it could be a success measure for you to see how your program has developed and how those weaker parts of the program have been strengthened over time. We think that there are some immediate short-term needs, and we've listed those again on page 15. We think that those, those short-term issues include, I think about a half a dozen. One is relative to leadership. We heard from people that they looked for a stronger connection between school leadership and the school programs. Second would be process clarity. And we've, we've heard that processes, identification of students, updating of students' programs, it varies quite a bit. And so there is, there is a need, in our opinion, from visiting your school district to clarify the process, to create process maps that show everybody in a transparent manner on your website when you interview new teachers, et cetera, show everybody the special education processes. Not a, not a quick task, but I think a critical task. C is role clarity. So solid role definitions. Again, we found that individuals with the same job title are performing very different functions in different parts of the district. And the role clarity is important, not only for job satisfaction, but to ensure an evenness of approach through, through the school district and equity in terms of resource allocation. We also think role clarity is important for teams. And so, you know, some, one of the comments that, that I remember reading from our report is, well, everybody knows what this is supposed to be about. And well, everybody does if you're all inside my head at the same time I'm thinking it. So they don't. And so we recommend that teams also receive a role description. So a student, a student team or a district team, what is their role? What are the limits of their authority? And again, putting this stuff out in public so that this is transparent, particularly for people who may not be familiar with the processes. We'd also, the fourth item is a service delivery model. You have a model here and you've had a model for, you know, some time. And so, but we think it's worth looking at other service delivery models. Not that we have a specific criticism of your model, but we heard enough from the folks in the field that maybe everything isn't, even if it's working ideally, really serving the community and serving the students to the extent that, that you'd recommend. The fifth is communications. And Toby and I recognize that a lot of work has been done in terms of improving communications. One of the things that we tell people is that communications almost always comes up as a concern because if there are, if there are 50 people in this room, we've all got a different preference as to how we're going to receive communication. I remember speaking with a parent in Pittsfield years ago, and this parent said she'd never heard anything from the school. And we said, well, what about those weekly things we send out at the end of the week? I don't pay any attention to those. Okay. Okay. So I think that's, that's a discussion I think that needs to happen among the various levels, and I think that will provide a greater direction. And we recognize that a good deal of work has been done in this area. And finally, we heard that the intensive needs program is a, is a major concern from people we spoke with. And so we'd recommend a quick review of that program. In terms of long-term goals, long-term development, we also recommend that you, you take a look at what we call, or what's called the student success ladder, which I think is on page 91, almost the last page in, in that report, in which asks you to take a look at sort of the structure of what a large-scale school improvement program should attend to. So those first five steps, we've provided some thoughts on those first five steps. The idea of a ladder is that the upper, the upper rungs of a ladder are useless if you can't, if you can't put your weight on the, on their lower levels. So what are those lower levels? What are those critical levels that this, this project, special education, needs to be nested within as would all of the programs in the Nashua School District? So number one, that first rung is leadership. And leadership not only means those foundational documents, statement of purpose, but also means identifying values that will help guide the program, that will reflect your community and reflect your needs of your students and your community. There are some other things that are enumerated there, and I'm not going to go through those very specifically right now. A second level is policy. In terms of special education, we'd recommend a policy audit relative to the, the purpose and those, those, those values and beliefs that you, that you believe should be governing your decision-making in special education. Do policies support your current programming? The third area, the third rung is management, and that's when you want to be taking a look at systems. And of course, when you talk about special education, you want to make sure that your program itself complies with federal and state requirements. But you also want to take a look at role descriptions, team charters, process maps, so that folks have a clear understanding and it's transparent for anybody who would be interested on how this program operates. This is not a short-term solution. And so this is a, this is a years of planning solution, in my opinion. Rung four is performance standards. Again, those updated role descriptions will help establish clear performance standards and a more, a tighter accountability for employees as well as for students. And so what is expected of students participating in, in a special education program? What is expected of parents? What is expected of the board, the administrator, et cetera? And rung five, essential community understanding and support. We strongly encourage involvement of community, and there are lots of ways to do that, to in this program review, in, in taking a look at the results, in assessing this, this, this report and deciding what you really want to do next. Very important and encourage all stakeholder groups to have a, a piece of the action. Again, we think that conditions are right now, and we appreciate and really admire and respect your administrators for, for calling us in, and we appreciate the school board's support of this program. We also, finally, as Toby mentioned, we were delighted to speak with, with your faculty and staff. And there's just so much energy and so much goodwill there that I think people are, are ready to move forward to the benefit of the students and your community. So we'll be happy to answer questions that you might have, and I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. That was, the, the report is very in-depth, and I truly appreciated your coming in and outlining it for us here. Do I have any comments or questions from the board? Ms. Darling?
So I was really hoping to see more in here. I know for me, the biggest issue I've had with the special education programs in the Nashua School District is the number of restraints and seclusions used in some of our schools. And I know for me, that is incredibly concerning because that is against the law and not healthy for a child's development in general. Did you have any findings or anything to say on the, how the policies are followed through on?
We didn't, we didn't, I don't recall that we heard much of anything in that regard, if anything. Toby, is that right?
I don't think that subject happened to come up in any of our...
Yeah, sorry. I had you come up here.
No, I was just agreeing that I don't think that it came up. We didn't delve into that topic specifically, but I think we were asking enough questions in those 14 areas that it, there would have been a place for it to have come up if it was on someone's mind.
I say that's almost more concerning to me that it didn't. Honestly...
Again, if you look at that student success ladder and think about those elements, leadership, you want to have your policies in place, and I don't know, we didn't do an audit of your policies, but there may be a place for you to have that clarified there. You know, in the leadership, you want to have the values and beliefs really strongly stated there. And the third level up, the management, you want to create systems of accountability.
One of the things I noted was, under the policy support, one of the comments is, policy is in place, practice is different. Something I've noticed across our district as a whole over the last two years is, you know, in the policy committee, we work so hard to wordsmith things with the best interest of students and staff in mind, but then there's no follow-through. Special education, bullying, the chain of, so, chain of command and support. And the other thing I just wanted to ask, is there a way for us to see, like, where the comments do go on both ends of the spectrum? You know, some say things are great, some say things are not so great. Is there a way to, for us to understand, like, which schools maybe need more help than others? Like, if there's one school that's doing really, really well, then, you know, we can kind of try to look at how they're doing things and help spread it across?
We do not have that. In fact, we guaranteed participants complete anonymity and not even, we asked them not even to identify their school or their assignment because we wanted to get, you know, the...
The most honest feedback.
Get the most out of them. You know, it seems as though with your, if you engage in a process of verifying results, you might find something, something about that. Do you want to share that story of the school that things were going down?
Yeah. The, there, there was one school in particular, and I couldn't even at this point tell you which one that was because they've all kind of blended together at this point. But they, they didn't want to participate in this process because they were afraid that if, they didn't, they didn't, it wasn't broken, so they didn't want to fix it, so to speak, right? So everything was going wonderfully, and they really didn't want to kind of upset the apple cart by even participating at all. I think some eventually did and were encouraged to do so by the, the principal, and we did talk to some of those people. But there, I mean, you absolutely have some, some places in the district that are doing things very well, and I agree with you, you want to, through that verification process, possibly kind of find what's, those places and then capitalize upon that. You know, make, get everything, something that's working, get it working someplace else. Absolutely.
And I really appreciate hearing that. All too often, as board members, we hear the negative first. So it's always nice when we hear that someone is doing things right. And I mean, I'm disappointed in the lack of attendance that we had. And rather than believing that such a significant number of our own staff, like, wasn't interested in helping us improve our program, I'm really hoping that, you know, our district and union leadership and our administrators in general will kind of evaluate how they're letting staff know what's going on and the importance of trying to reach out and make this program better because we can't get better if we don't know what's broken. And I don't know about you guys, but I'm not in the schools enough to know what works and what doesn't. And I really appreciate the anonymity, anonymity aspect of it because I understand how scary it can be to come forward and... it can be to come forward, and, you know, we all worry about our jobs, so I definitely appreciate that.
Right, and I think, too, the other thing that was notable was that because we did promise anonymity, and I think people believed us, and they well should have, that people were very candid, both about what was going well and what wasn't going well. So I felt like not once was anybody kind of holding back.
Yeah.
So definitely. And one of the reasons that we decided to spend the time and energy to give you everybody's comments was because we felt that honored their voice. They had come forward, they had something to say, and so we did not want one thing that was said not to be part of what the final report, so, yeah.
I love that. Thank you so much.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Thank you for this detailed report. It's like reading a book here. What some of my concerns is, some of the comments, change in leadership have created instability. Well, we had a whole big change in our superintendent last year, so hopefully that's going to start easing up a little bit. You know, it takes a year before they get where they need to be. But some of the other issues, I have concerns with every program. School does its own thing, no consistency of program or even materials and technology. And that's where my concern is, because I always said, if you're going to Maine Dunstable, you're going to Dr. Crisp when you're in special ed. Whether it's special ed or any other program, there has to be consistency throughout the district, so you can move from school to school and still be able to carry on with your learning process because the consistency is there. Then somebody wrote here, "I honestly don't know how to define success in special education. Graduation rates, employment rates, ready scores at the high school level, we don't have any standardized processing, process monitoring tools." So that's a big concern to me, because we do it with other programs, that special ed can't be left out in the cold here. These are kids that have minor to severe needs that we need to address. The law says we have to, and we will do it, whether the law said we had to or not, because you're entitled to an education. Unfortunately, it's adequate, the state legislature's never defined what an adequate education is, even when I was up there. They never defined that. So that concerns me. We need strong leadership in central office. Hopefully, we're starting to get better leadership in central office. You know, it takes a little bit of time. We've had turnovers. It hasn't been easy for us as a board or a central since COVID. We've had, like, a little bit of a nightmare one after the other here. Also with this, I think there's an important piece that I know that it's not in here, caselos we talk about, but we have educational advocates that really could bring in a lot of light into what they see happens with their students and with the IEPs and not following the IEPs and the 504s and not getting the proper education that they're supposed to because we're not following it, or we don't have the IEP meetings prior to school or when school ends. I think that's a very big point that has to be looked at, and hopefully, we will invite a lot of advocates into this because I think they're the key players in special ed with the district, with the communication, with their clients, with the parents and the students, because it's unfortunate parents can't do everything. They don't know how to, what the meetings are, the IEP meetings and what comes after, and how they follow that IEP. So I think that's a very important piece in this whole report, and I hope that we're going to, when we get the group started, however we're going to do this, we do invite educational advocates in because I think they can give us more knowledge and more information than we know that we don't have. Thank you.
Raymond?
Thank you so much for this report, and I am really excited that we had the audit, and I was really excited to read all of those comments. I know that that was a ton of work for you guys to meet with everybody and get all of those comments, but the candor of our staff is going to allow us to know where we're at so that we can address the needs that they have, and we can't do that without that level of candor, and so I was really excited about it. I have a couple of questions, and I don't know if they're for you guys so much as they are for administration. You've given us a roadmap for steps moving forward to make sure that we can take this data and kind of run with it to do what we need to do. And so the questions that I have are regarding some of the district-level things that are advised here in the report, like the advisory council and the steering team. Do we have steering committees already? And then the other question, kind of piggybacking on that, is I know that when policy was looking at our ACE, our non-discrimination policy regarding special education needs, Ms. Lampier and Mr. Alexander had met about creating a parent support committee? I don't know what you guys were going to be calling it, so I'm wondering where that is. And then the third part of the question is, do we need to make a board-level task force or committee, under the advisory council part? I know, three, all in one.
Right, and so I'll go back, start from the bottom. Number two, number three probably answers like number one with the advisory. So I think we could have a working steering committee. We started some of that work last year in collaboration with the NTU, but we were really waiting for this report, so I see that moving forward. So we just met with John and Toby a week ago Friday. So we're still digesting some of their recommendations. We had our admin retreat last week where we shared this report or some of the recommendations with our admin team, so that would be our next step on creating a steering committee and also validating some of the responses. So I think that is our next step. So that, I think, answers one and two. So I don't, I don't know, I wouldn't recommend that we need a specific ad hoc committee at the board level, but I think we should routinely be updating the board on where we are in that progress over the course of the next year. In speaking with Toby and John, some of the recommendations might be up to seven years because we only could do so much each year. So where are we on that, the ladder? What do we have to fix first? And some of it might be around that leadership and the policy and the management, job role descriptions, so that we have, when we're meeting in our steering committees, and we saw this last year, that we have special educators across the district, and you ask them what they do, and you thought you were at the United Nations. It was just different people were doing different things and just using different kind of languages, so we have to rein that in, and that's one of our tasks, I think, in the fall, to go through that exercise. And then the second question was around the parent advisory group.
Yes, so we've actually met, I think, a total of three times. And what it was, so there used to be a group, and there still is a group, and they're a Nashua Parent Outreach Group, and they've existed for many years. So I reached out to them because they hadn't been active really since COVID. So we met with them and kind of looked at what my goals and thoughts were along with theirs, and we are, you know, kind of coming together as one collective group. Unfortunately, due to vacations for folks, yeah, we were supposed to meet this month, but we haven't pulled together our August meeting. We have invited them, put them on the agenda for Dr. Andre's September admin meeting, so they can come to all of our principals, explain who they are, talk about what their goals are, how can they get into schools, information out there to parents. I was kind of waiting for this report, too, to share with them, because they are parents of children with special education and special needs, to be able to review this, give some feedback from that parent perspective on what they've seen as well. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about is, I don't want to create too many groups and have silos. So how is the best way to create the group so we're focusing on these tasks, developing an improvement plan that incorporates all these recommendations that they put in there, look at the prioritization of them, and then start working on them as we go along? Because it was a lot, and I appreciate all the comments that you guys had because different perspectives, you know, give us different things, and I wrote some notes as I was listening, so I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. I'm so excited to hear that, especially since we just approved the updates to ACE in, what, June? So for you to already have been jumping on that, I wish Ms. Lampier was here because she would be, like, doing a little happy dance, I think, because this is near and dear to her heart, so this is great. I'm looking forward to hearing what the steering committees have to say and what the parent advisory group has to say. And I'll follow up with Mr. Poska about policy, because I don't know.
Darling?
I also wish Ms. Lampier was here tonight, because I know this audit was incredibly important to her, is incredibly important to her. This steering committee, is it going to look into the restraint and seclusion and do some retraining of our staff to make sure that that is not happening again?
As of today, I don't think, I don't know the exact charge of this steering committee, but that's something we could be looking at before that steering committee. I think that's something that we review. I know our head school psychologist reviews that, she does safety training, so if that's not part of the steering committee, that's something that we need to address immediately.
All right. I also wanted to know if there was a way that the board in general could get updates when we have a school that's reaching that number of restraints and seclusion? We're talking well over 150% of what every other school in New Hampshire was, not just our district. When a school is reaching that level where they have so many restraints and seclusions, shouldn't the board know that there's a problem?
Can I just clarify what you're referencing?
The, if you go to the New Hampshire School Board site, they have the list of all of the restraints and seclusions that are reported from each school every year, and Child Care Aware also gives them out, and one of our schools had over 200.
Just to piggyback on that, we did change the state law this year. There were a lot of hearings up at Concord regarding restraint, and there was no allegations or evidence that we're inappropriately using restraint. So I just want to be clear about that, because a lot of the testimony that came out, actually, we have this dichotomy where some of the testimony at the State Child and Family Law Committee held up Dr. Crisp, for example, as like a shining beacon on a hill on how to handle MTSS and special education. So I think there's a gamut, and I don't, I know Mr. Poska and I talked about the change in the law, and we looked at our policy, and our policy is already in agreement with the new law, because we already said that the type of restraint that's been prohibited in New Hampshire was already prohibited in Nashua.
This is another issue of not the policy, but the follow-through. I think our policies are beautifully written, but I myself have read the reports of a student put in seclusion for throwing a shoe. That is not life-threatening, that is not threatening another student. He threw the shoe at the ground and was put in seclusion, 10 years old.
So I think those are probably conversations that we can have not in the middle of a presentation.
I've been trying.
But let's, we'll follow that up with a different conversation, maybe with special education, and see if we need to have administrative, administration let us know what kind of supports they're putting in place in those schools to try to interrupt those interventions, so.
That was going to be my suggestion. I think there could be a presentation on this topic, all the training that we do, and then, obviously, in those matters, that's administrative investigation, so we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I think none. Very much appreciate all of your work, and I am looking forward to using this as a guide map and seeing what you guys are going to present to us to make our special education department go from really good to amazing, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you to everyone signing their claps. I appreciate that.
Okay, so this brings us up to, I'm looking for a motion to accept our consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio, thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That was-
Johnson, Brown, Darling.
Ms. Johnson and Ms. Darling.
We've got a great harmony going on with our nay by this point.
And then going on to public comments or questions. Ms. Darling, do you mind giving me the? I just need the list.
No, I've missed you, so I thought I'd come back. My name's Adam Marqu, I live at Fort Jolore Lane. I have four children in the Nashua School District, and I am the president of the Nashua Teachers Union, and I was going to talk about music, but I'm going to let the music experts do that, so now I'm going to talk special ed. And I'm glad, oh, they left already, huh. I got to meet with them in the spring as well, and this is something, special ed was a concern when Dr. McKinney was here, right? Not with our people, but the lack of people, and I was happy to hear they're working to recruit people. And all the other things they talked about, I'm at school A, school B does it this way, why aren't we doing it this kind of, you know, we don't need cookie cutter schools, but there needs to be consistency with policy and procedures in place. So Dr. Andre came, we continued those discussions, and I'm glad to hear what they had to say with some of the things that we had been talking about already, right? So this was a great report, I don't mean great, but great to have the report to use to move forward. My only concern about things that were said tonight were some of the broad-brush comments that don't shine the best light on our special educators. Like, parents don't know when the meetings are. I don't think that's true. Does it happen once in a while? Sure, I believe that, but we have fewer and fewer people doing the same amount of work or more because we can't fill these vacancies. And then we have broad brushes that we're restraining kids for everything. Like, where are the citations and information? Because I don't think that's true either. As the person that represents the teachers in Paris, who are some of the people that may have to use CPI training with their students, and our administrators, the person who deals with discipline with our staff in our collective bargaining agreements, I have not sat in a disciplinary meeting with one staff member on improper restraints, with the exception of one, in eight years. So for these broad things, when we don't know what you're talking about, if it's a one-time situation, if you're Joe Public listening to this, it makes it sound like we have incompetent people in our schools. And I don't think that was the intent, but that's what I heard in the audience as a person who lives and works in this district. So I wanted to make that comment. I'm excited to see where we take this to help that department move forward, because there's a lot of hard-working, dedicated people, just like in all the other departments, but of all of the departments, they're the ones that are doing with the fewest people. So I just wanted to make that comment. If you have information for me on those things that I asked about, I'd love to read it and see what it's about, so I can be better educated myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing, actually. Really good. There really is not much worse than having to interrupt somebody when they're in the middle of speaking. I was thinking, like, you know, in Blue Man Group, where it's like, all right, and it talks? You know what I'm talking about? Okay. Carol Gorlick. Gore, Gurelli? Gorilic, right?
I think there's a few of you that I know here. Carol Gorilic, Six Horizons Circle. Sorry? Okay. Is that better? Okay. I will. Carol Gorilic, Six Horizons Circle. I'm here to speak to you today as the parent of six children who went through the Nashua School District. I am myself a retired elementary school teacher, but also the proud parent of a music teacher. I sought out feedback from some friends and former colleagues when I heard about the choral and band ensembles wanting to be removed from the school day and- wanting to be removed from the school day. And some of the feedback that I got, well, there was a variety. One person, who was a parent of three in Nashua, said, if you are of the mindset that only reading, writing, and arithmetic should be taught in schools, why would one want to eliminate ensembles and chorus and band during the school day, which combine all three of those disciplines? It seems like a fool's errand to me. Another parent of two in Nashua said, this will undo decades of hard work that's been put into these elementary feeder schools. These students need music ensembles and fine arts during their regular day. A former teacher and parent of two in Nashua, this is upsetting on so many levels. I am thinking about students who have no transportation after school. There will be no equity in delivery of instruction. I know many children who were saved because of music and fine arts during their school day. Another person who is a music teacher in Nashua, not with the school district, but a private music teacher, said, there needs to be a state law that mandates band orchestra chorus classes during the school day. Too many students just can't participate before or after school because of transportation issues. Very sad that this would even be a point of discussion. I hope that enough people speak up before the school board decides to have all Nashua Elementary Schools, and have all Nashua Elementary Schools be sure that it's part of the school day. So I'm dumbfounded that something like this is even being proposed, especially given the benefit of music to students. I have two studies here. I'm sure I don't have enough time, but a study conducted in MIT, December 2020, and published in the Journal of Neuroscience, says teaching children music increases other skills and brain power. I'll go down to musicians' brains were vastly more structurally and functionally connected than non-musicians, especially in the areas of the brain responsible for speech, sound, auditory cortices of both hemispheres. And the musical group also showed a stronger connection for the auditory cortex cortices to other brain areas, frontal, parietal, et cetera. I will give you the study if you want. And there was another one in the Journal of Educational Psychology, June 20, 2019, which highlighted that test scores among students that studied music from an early age were an entire grade level higher than students that did not. So, again, inequity. If you put this before or after school, the chorals and the ensembles, it just will be inequitable to those students, and you'll have the haves and the have-nots again. This will help. Keeping the music during the school day will help fill that gap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Pispitos? No, that doesn't, close enough doesn't count, but I'm just gonna...
Mary Pispitos. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mary Pispitos, 27 Cleveland Street, Nashua. I'm very proud to be the choral director at Fairgrounds Middle School. This fall will be my 24th year teaching, 21st at Fairgrounds. And I'm here tonight with a different perspective. I certainly could tell you about my choral program. I'm going to just let that speak for itself. But I want to share a story with you about a little girl who was bullied mercilessly in elementary school. Kids can be cruel. They teased her for everything. Aside of kids being cruel, she couldn't read well. She didn't understand math. She was a daydreamer. Teachers didn't like her in her classroom in the sense that she was extra work. She often ate lunch alone. She didn't have many people to turn to. Both of her parents worked. Money was very tight. She wasn't able to stay after school and maybe join events or clubs when she was in elementary school because she had to go home. She had chores. She had maybe to help make dinner, take the dog out, things her parents couldn't do because they were working. But once she got home, she was in a safe place, because singing was her solace. And singing was a place where she could find her strength. She could understand her feelings. When she sang, no one laughed at her. No one made fun of her. When she was in fourth grade, there was an in-school choir class. She was able to take that class. And for the first time in her life, she was able to look forward to going to school. By December of that year, she was given a solo in her Christmas concert. And that changed the trajectory of her life, because that was the one and only day in all of her elementary school. She was not teased or picked on. She was actually praised, both by her peers and her teachers. That gave her an accomplishment that empowered her to never stop singing. By middle school, her family had moved towns, and she was no longer the dumb kid who couldn't do anything right. She was the new girl who could sing. And that student would go on to become very active in her high school music program, making music festivals and district festivals, singing in her church, singing in community theater. And the girl who could barely read ended up on the dean's list at West Virginia University, earning her bachelor's degree in music education, pursued that with a bachelor, a master of arts degree from Ohio State. And that girl will be teaching 21 years this fall at Fairgrounds Middle School. If you had taken that from me, I guarantee you I would not be here today. I was bullied mercilessly. Music saved me. Now, I should be telling you as a choral director, oh, my job, my job. That is very important to me. But I'll be long gone and still care very much for the students of the Nashua School District. And I'll say one last thing. I'm living proof that music matters. I'm living proof. Taking away elementary chorus during the school day will completely devastate an already post-COVID crippled music department. I guarantee you. I had 250 kids in my choral program pre-COVID, 80 in the sixth grade choir. It's awesome. I have 73 in my program as of last year, 13 in my sixth grade choir. But my principal, Sharon Coffey, is amazing. And she and I worked together to do a recruitment tour. I am thrilled to tell you there are now 29 kids in my sixth grade general music class. Please don't take away elementary chorus. You don't have the experience to understand the benefit. And if you do, I implore you, please reconsider. Thank you very much for your time.
Deb Bartle?
Hi. My name's Deb Bartle, and I'm a mom of three. Live at 38 Durham. All three of my kids went through the Nashua School District. And music has been such a foundation for all three of my kids in their lives. And it all started with Mrs. Neeland at Birchhill Elementary School. One of my son's friends took part in the HMS Pinafore in fifth grade, and it was his first introduction to theater, and is what made him fall in love with music. Now he's a church organist. Another one of his friends has said that without music in elementary school, there's no guarantee she would have even thought to get into it. Not only did she take part in it, but she was lead in many of the class plays and part of Young Americans. If they hadn't had music or theater in elementary school, my son, he's best friends with those two individuals, wouldn't have taken band in middle school because he wouldn't have been learning the clarinet. He wouldn't have gotten closer to the two friends I mentioned as well as others, and wouldn't have followed them into drama club, or been chosen to learn the bass clarinet as well in senior high school in band, or chosen to do chorus in high school because his friends weren't doing it. In his words, he said, quote, "I might have had completely different friends and interests. I'd be a totally different person. I haven't really thought about how much general music class in elementary school affected my life," end quote. I could say similar things about my daughter, but she will speak for herself in a moment. Let's also not forget the fact that music strengthens math and other courses learning for students. I strongly encourage this board to keep music during the school day, as it is such a benefit for our kids, not only now, but as they become adults as well. Thank you.
Samantha Lestrone?
Hello. My name is Samantha Sestrone, and I'm from 75 Bauer Street. That was my mom. And so, yeah, like she said, my brothers and I, we all went through the elementary school music education in Nashua School District. And honestly, grades one through three were my foundation for music. And I followed, I built on those foundations through middle school, high school, and college. And a lot of people have mentioned already the benefits of music in other aspects of education. But also as a person starting to learn music at such a young age, it gave me the opportunity to learn at a much younger age, different values that a lot of people hold, such as humility. If you screw up on audition really badly, then you just learn to take that in stride. And on the same kind of note, resiliency. And also, while I was in college, I had the opportunity to be a member of Kappa Kappa Psi, which is the National Honorary Band for Trinity. And honestly, I just had to be here today to support service to the band. And I think it would be a big disservice to the band and all of the students of the Nashua School District if you were to remove music education from the school day. Thank you.
Sonia Prince?
Sonia Prince, 49 Tufts Drive. I'm going to say ditto to what Ms. Carol Gorilic said. She said a lot of the things that I was kind of going to touch on. But I have three kids who went through the school district. Two of them were very involved in band and chorus and musical theater. And I would say they came home happy every day because of those subjects. Some kids love math and science and things like that. That's great. But my kids really like music. So if it wasn't for music, they probably wouldn't have liked school very much. So the enjoyment they got from that, and everything they've learned, their skills, thanks to a lot of teachers here, they are who they are today. Two of them are in Los Angeles right now, following their dreams related to the arts. So I think it's super important to keep that in our schools. Some kids just don't have that one topic that they really love, and it makes a huge difference. So I hope you consider dropping this. It's kind of ridiculous. I can't believe we're here talking about that. But it seems to be a decade-old agenda that some people keep bringing up to attack the arts, which is ridiculous. So I hope you move on to bigger and better things. I'm sure you have bigger fish to fry. Thanks.
Brianna Bayastov? Is that close?
The last name was right. I'm Brienne Bayastov.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. I live at 61B Gilman Street in Nashua. I am the choral director here at Nashua North. This is my ninth year. I'm coordinator for secondary music. I'm going to talk a little quickly because I think I won't get it all in. Right now, as a district, we're currently being sort of, I don't want to say punished, but we're falling into alignment with a bunch of things that we have to do now. We failed those ELL kids and those special ed kids, and we undoubtedly need to learn how to fix that. But right now, the music department here is a feather in our cap. We sent a kid to the National Choir this year. Sent five kids to the US Regional Eastern Region Ensembles. We sent 30 kids to Allstate from our high schools. The middle schools sent over 20 kids to district ensembles this year. And since I've been here, I've had several students, including Carol Gorilic's son, who are music teachers now. The thing is that most of these kids never become music teachers, or professional musicians, or anything like that. But they still carry all the skills that they get in this program everywhere they go. As a teacher in Nashua, I'm really proud of my colleagues, and I'll take one second to speak about that. We have one elementary school teacher who won an nephew last year. I was nominated for Choral Director of the Year in New Hampshire, and am president of the New Hampshire Chapter of the American Choral Directors Association. Another high school music teacher is Chair of the Allstate Festival. One who's Jazz Allstate Band Manager. Several professional orchestra players. At least three of your current music faculty teach at the college level. More than half perform regularly as professional musicians. This is all to say that your faculty is worldly, experienced, and involved in professional organizations that care about well-rounded students with excellent all-around education. You couldn't find a more esteemed music faculty in all of New Hampshire. I challenge you to find one. You won't. I've recently been hearing from a lot of teachers that they're looking to find something more stable. They're asking me for letters of recommendation. And that is not okay with me. I fielded three requests this week for my students to sing at district and city events. And I'm really worried that that won't be a possibility recovering after this change. These requests, they'll just be impossible to grant. And these ensembles, while not formally core content, they do allow ELL and special education students a safe place to spread their wings, practice what they learn in their core classes, gives them a place to succeed, to build language skills, and to learn new things in real time alongside their peers at the same rate that their peers are learning them. Even if my student, my son, weren't interested in these ensembles, I believe that music classes contribute immeasurably to a school culture, a school culture that I want for my son. With limits on recess and playtime and working snack times for kindergartners and jam-packed academic schedules, culture is going to be increasingly hard to come by. You can bet that the effects of these problems are going to be felt most strongly along demographic lines in our city. Sorry, my things are out of order. As a parent of a rising fourth grader, I want my son to go to the school with the most opportunities. If his school can't offer band and chorus, or if his chorus will only have five students in it, because it's after school and other parents can't bring their students, that's not an equitable education for him. I'm already frustrated that his soccer teammates, for example, have opportunities for cross-country after school that he doesn't have, because his school doesn't have someone to do it. As a teacher of high schoolers who regularly collaborates with core content teachers, I can tell you that those teachers regularly report to me that band and chorus students have great interpersonal skills. They have great time management skills, and they are largely more well-prepared than their peers. For students who are not performing as well academically, these ensembles are often the only thing keeping those students even coming into the building. It is also another opportunity for us to bring parents into our learning communities. Parents who have kids who play in these programs come to school. They come to concerts, and they come get involved with what's going on in their communities. It's not going to be easy to do the scheduling piece of it. It's not. We had an illuminating meeting today. I think that we got a lot of things out on the table at central office, and I'm really grateful for that meeting. We're going to need to think outside the box, and we're going to need support to do that. Dr. Andre's right in what he said in our meeting today, that it's going to require collaboration. There are so many people that want to help. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tina Lincoln?
Hi. I'm Tina Lincoln. I'm from, I live at Three Falls Grove Road here in Nashua. I am the proud parent of a senior at North. Scary, too. I am also the elementary music teacher at Charlotte Ave, and the coordinator for the music department at the elementary level. So all of this hits... I adore my chorus, and they adore me. I'm not even going to lie about it. Many of our students that really do well in chorus, well, they all do well in chorus, but some of our students really get the most out of chorus when, if it's a student that has emotional issues that they're not handling very well in their classroom, and then suddenly they just glow in chorus. And the teachers tell me every year, oh, so-and-so has been having such a hard time, but then they had that solo and everything turned around for them. Every year, I could tell you multiple stories about chorus. And I realize that we have all of these restrictions on us, and I am all about children learning to read and write and do science. Absolutely. I think we just have to think a little more clearly about where we can pull this to have chorus during the school day. It will ruin our Nashua Music Department. If we stop chorus at the elementary level, which having it before school, we would not have the same quality of chorus. There's no way to refute that. That means that that many less students would go up to middle school, and that many less students would go up to high school. Imagine, actually, one of our music teachers said earlier, imagine a football game without a marching band. We're going to have such small groups that some of those ensembles won't be possible. So it's super important that we try to find some creative ways to work around the restrictions that we have. I totally acknowledge we have these restrictions. We definitely need students in their language arts learning, in their read, in their math learning, and in their science learning. Absolutely. We just have to be a little more creative to find a way around it to keep chorus during the school day. Band also is in danger here. And right now, most, I don't know how many of you know what the band and chorus schedules look like at the elementary level, but band usually, at most of our schools, has some of their instruction during the school day and some of it before or after. What we're trying to do is, well, with this new suggested plan, is to have all of it before school. So imagine being an elementary school parent who lives in a needier part of our community, needing to bring your child to school twice a week just for band. And if your chorus is before school, that's three times a week. Some of these parents don't have cars or transportation or anyone to watch their smaller children while they bring their kids to these events. Extracurricular activities aren't the norm at the elementary level. For that reason, daycare is an issue for these parents. So I think that removing chorus as the larger group, removing that from the school day would be so detrimental to our program. I just beg you all to rethink how we're going to handle that. Brianna and I have offered to work with anyone who wants to hear us to help them work out a way to make this happen. I know my school, my principal, has already found a way around it. I only pray that the rest of our district can do the same. So, thank you.
I am looking forward to that discussion later on in the agenda. I think we all have some questions as well, but this brings us up to our superintendent's comments, so I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone who spoke tonight in support of the music program. First, I want to welcome back our students and adults alike. I hope everyone had a restful and relaxing summer. We have been incredibly busy this summer, from high-quality professional development to a number of construction projects in over 400 students in summer school. So we've been busy over the last three months. I want to thank all of the teachers, our paros, our secretaries, who've been doing a lot of the work behind the scenes. I also want to especially call out our custodians and our maintenance department. Again, just walking around some of the schools, they're already immaculate a week before school. Sometimes we get the last-minute stretch on making sure that all of our classrooms are ready, but I really want to thank Director Smith and his department for all the work that they do over the summer. I just, it's incredibly, and it always, I mean, on how our custodians and maintenance department can turn around and make our schools look so great in only eight weeks. It's just a Herculean effort, and I just really want to call them out for all their Also, in addition to strengthening our teaching and learning and raising our overall student achievement, I think this year, I think it's critically important that we bolster our culture that's fostered on a lens of celebration. As we heard tonight, we all know there are wonderful things going on in our school, and we need to, in our school every day. And I think we need to, when we're sharing our stories, think about those stories. Are we choosing to highlight the negative things that are going on or are positives? And I can tell you firsthand, 99% of my day is good news, but that doesn't make social media. And so I need, I need to, and everybody else who's telling stories, to find that lens of celebration, that perspective on the incredible work our teachers are doing with our students on a daily basis, just the way our secretaries are greeting people. There is so much going on, and how are we changing our perspective to joy, excitement, inspiration, growth, collaboration? It happens more than we know, but that's not what makes our social media. So we need to really focus on that celebration and the greatness that's happening on a day-to-day basis. So that being said, I also want to invite our families to our 20th Annual Nashua Goes Back to School Celebration. The City of Nashua welcomes families to the 20th Annual Nashua Goes Back to School, 5:00 to 6:30 this Thursday, August 24, at the Nashua Public Library. All students and their families are invited. All activities in the meet and greet with principals will take place outdoors in the library plaza. As in past years, the principals will be distributing donated school supplies with the help of community volunteers. Families will also have the opportunity to sign up online for the federal lunch program. We hope to see you there. And in closing, we look forward to seeing everyone next week. School opens Tuesday, August 29. Let's have a great school year.
Ooh, summer went fast. Board member responses. I'll start over here with Ms. Giglio because I feel like I always pick on Ms. Darlin and Ms. Raymond when they're over there.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Andre, for that very positive, uplifting kind of message. I will have something to say later on when we're discussing the music situation, as it's something very dear to my heart as well. And I am very excited about the new school year starting, and I don't know, I just, I don't, I mean, my children are well out of school, my grandchildren are in school, and it's just, there's such excitement at the beginning of the school year for all of the kids, little kids, big kids, music kids, non-music kids, artists, you know, math geeks. Sorry, I shouldn't have used that term. Sorry. Anyway, I'm very excited, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Andre, for bringing up the positives. There is so much going on in Nashua that is good. We're going through some tough times, but people are working hard, our teachers are involved, our administrators are working hard. I think the bones of the district are good, and we're going through a little tough time as every other district is in this country. If you read about any of our school districts, I just read where one of the schools in Nashua was canceling courses, two courses this year because they couldn't find teachers, and I believe it's happening with more schools. So our teachers are stepping up, our administrators are stepping up, and I know your office has stepped up. So thank you so much, and I think we have to keep a positive attitude. Yeah, we have some hills to climb, but we've had a lot of successes, too. Thank you.
Johnson?
Thank you. I would like to say, you know, welcome back to everybody for next week. Hard to believe, I was saying this today since some of my colleagues, the summer just began. I remember everybody out of school in graduation. What a great time that was, in the rain, no less. You know, we enjoy, we didn't melt, but we enjoyed it, and now we're back for another year, and before we know it, it's going to be Christmas vacation. You know, that's how fast time goes. As you get older, that's how fast time goes. But, you know, we're going through some growing pains again. We have new administration this past year. There's nothing we can't try to iron out on this board because we work together as a team. And regarding this music program, I'm not, you know, we're not getting rid of the music program. I think we need to go through every step and listen to what administration has to say to us tonight, and the board will talk about it, and we'll see a clear path on what we're going to do. Thank everybody for coming up and speaking. Thank you, Dr. Andre, you know, and I don't go on social media, so I don't read the negatives because I just don't want to answer anything. So it's easier to stay away than to get on there and let the fingers work before the brain goes. So I vowed not to go on social media, and I've been a good girl and stayed off of it. Thank you.
Brown?
Thank you, Dr. Andre, for giving some accolades to Mr. Smith and his crew because I actually did notice it when I was walking in today to this building and then to another one because I really have done a great job spiffing everything up, so that's really good to hear. And I also want to give you some credit as one of the teachers. I think this administration is doing a much better job of making an effort to collaborate with teachers. You know, we heard that that's what's going to hopefully be happening with the special education department and also with the music educators, and so I applaud you for that.
Dr. Claffey?
Hi.
Ms. Raymond?
They have two words. So I'm glad that you highlighted some of the work that's been going on this summer as we've been doing our summer travels, we've been going around, and I'm seeing a lot of work that I'm sure will be highlighted on Thursday's JS SBC meeting after Nashua Goes Back to School, which the entirety of the JS SBC will be running from the library back here to try and make it. But, I mean, we have new track services at the middle schools, and the construction on Franklin Street looks great. I was down there the other day because I had to go to the bank, so I like drove around. I'm excited to see all of the work that's being done at Main Dunstable and Birch Hill and making sure that our kids have safe learning environments to come back to. And so I really appreciate all of that that has been done all this summer, and I'd love to have, like, I can't wait for Thursday when we can see pictures of it all. So, thanks.
Arlene?
Ms. Giglio, just so you know, the PC term is now mathletes. I will continue to wear the geek badge honorably. I love being a math geek personally. And no, I just want to say, like, our administrators have done so much work this summer, and growing up, as a kid, you don't realize how much work the people in schools are doing when you're on vacation. And it's been really eye-opening the last two years of doing this. And I went over to Dr. Crisp this morning and saw lights on and cars in the building right at 6 o'clock in the morning. Knowing that everyone's gearing up and getting ready for kids to come back is super exciting. And as a parent, I just want to say I'm even more excited than the kids. I cannot wait. But overall, I just want to say I have never been more proud of a district, and the way that people come out and, you know, speak their mind and want to advocate for our students, that's huge, and I'm just really proud to be part of this district. So thank you guys so much. That's it for me.
Member of the board, comment?
Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well. I'm definitely looking forward to the beginning of the school year, and I hope everyone else is as well. Seems like they are. Athletics are back, and personally, I've definitely been enjoying those 6:00 AM cross-country practices. So thanks, Coach Haggerty. Schedules came out on Aspen today, and while everything is not perfect, I'd like to thank the school counselors who put in a lot of work to do their best they can to fulfill students' requests. I would not want to have that job. And then seniors, well, and really everyone, remember to keep an eye on classical classrooms for just important info as the school year approaches. I look forward to this Thursday's Back to School event, and I'll be there volunteering for South Cross Country, at least for a shift. And then as the school year is rapidly approaching, I encourage students to reach out to me at any time with any questions, concerns, and/or feedback they may have. Thank you.
You. All right, so into committee business, I will turn the floor over to Ms. Johnson for Finance and Operations.
Thank you so much. That was a big meeting we had last week.
Yes.
I moved to accept the proposal from Train to repair the chiller for the Nashua High School South in the amount of $19,700. Funding will be from Building and Grounds Maintenance Account, 91.1.22.2620.54280. Second?
You. Assuming chiller is freezer?
It's a part. It's like a motor.
I don't know.
Chiller.
Chiller.
There wasn't an in-depth discussion of what, sorry, I haven't been recognized.
I know, I'm making a joke.
Do we need to know what it is to approve? To spend a lot of money?
HVAC expertise.
Thought it made things cool. I meant cool enough. Can't have fun, what's the point? Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the proposal from Train to repair the chiller?
Chiller. You're making fun of my accent.
Maybe a little.
Case closed. Close case.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I moved to accept the proposal from Q's Equipment to purchase a nifty lift. What can I say? TM34TG in the amount of $31,995. Funding will come from the city's FY23 SURF account.
Second.
You. Yeah. Any comments or questions? Sorry, it sounds like you guys are just making up words now. Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the proposal from Q's Equipment to purchase a nifty lift? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I moved to approve the purchase of $1,000 HP G9EE 11-inch Chromebook licenses from whom for $234,890 using FY24 Budget Funds Account, 91.199222571221. Second?
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next recommendation, to approve the Wisconsin Center for Education Products and Services, we're going to be removing that from the agenda. Mr. Donovan asked that we do that.
Okay.
Okay. I moved to approve the FY24 July Transfer Report as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. On the motion to approve the fiscal year 24 July transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I moved to approve $190,000 to replace an escrow for firewalls and IT equipment. Second?
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving $190,000 to be placed in escrow for firewalls and IT equipment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved.
And that is it.
You.
Thank you.
It is now Committee on Policy. I will hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond, who had an equally as interesting policy meeting.
Thank you. We had a very busy, and I'm just trying to scroll down on my giant packet to policy in case people have questions, and I'm still not there yet. I know, I got it. There's just 150 pages. All right, well, I'll just start. I move that we approve policy B, 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 F, which is student members on the Board of Education. Everyone will see in their packet that we've made a couple of adjustments, and I would like to hand the floor over, if we have a second, to Mr. Kess- which is student members on the Board of Education. Everyone will see in their packet that we've made a couple of adjustments. And I would like to hand the floor over, if we have a second, to Mr. Castellano to speak to it.
Sure, yes. So basically, the changes we made were to give student members, student representatives, a symbolic vote. And Ms. Raymond and I, we found a better term as well that Bedford School District uses. They call it a non-binding vote for student members of the board to cast if they'd like to. It's, again, not a requirement of us, but we feel like it would give us more of a role or like practice in just serving on a board. And being that it's not a requirement, it won't like, it's not forcing us to do anything we don't feel uncomfortable with. I know that was one of the concerns. But, um, so yeah, that's the main gist of the change. If Ms. Raymond wanted to add anything.
No, so I would like to just make the motion to approve the policy with the change there from the word symbolic vote to non-binding vote, just because it's consistent with other districts. And then the other thing that our student members requested was that they be given the option to be assigned to standing committees in January during our organizational meeting. Again, it wouldn't be a requirement. I still need a second, if people are...
Second?
Any comments or questions? Ms. Brown?
I really, you know how much I really love having input from our student members of the board? And I think that's, I'm not going to support this particular edit to the policy. I think it puts undue pressure on students. And I also think that because, whether you want to use the word symbolism or non-binding, it doesn't really matter semantically. But I think that they could actually get pressure from outside organizations and just to give an extra force to hot-button issues. And quite frankly, I don't think that's fair to students, and I don't think it's fair to the people of the city of Nashua who have elected representation to represent them. However, I want to say I am very much in favor of students always having a voice on every single motion, every single issue. And I never want to put a damper on their ability to weigh in on that.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. As far as our students coming to all standing committees, I think that's an excellent idea. Gives them an idea of what's going to happen at the full board. They get to speak. I can't support, like Ms. Brown, non-binding vote, because I think it puts them too much in the spotlight. We see some of the hate we get, I hate to say it, at times, on our votes and our discussions. I think it's unfair for students to have to be subject to that, too, because there'll be, people won't understand it might be a non-binding vote, and they might take it the wrong way. And I think that, I think their place on the board is very important, but I won't support this even as a non-binding vote. I don't think it's at this point in time. I think this district has gone through so much in the last several years in the community. I don't think that the community has calmed down yet on a lot of issues. And I don't want to see our students be part of getting, I don't want to say hate, but getting those emails and Facebook conversations that normally they would not be put into that position. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, so we had a lot of discussion on this in the policy meeting as well, but just wanted to clarify. I mean, we're given the right to, or just like, we're allowed to speak on any proposal already or anything like that. And we're, we know we can face criticism from that. I know Warren and I currently haven't faced any of that. But, um, so like, being that it's an optional vote as well, I feel like we're putting ourselves in that situation. If we want to express our opinions, we should be able to be criticized for them, just like all other politicians or, like, people who sign up for this position aren't just, usually aren't just doing it just for the, to say they're there. They're doing it to represent students and feel like they have a voice there. So, thank you.
Ms. Darling, then Ms. Raymond?
I want to speak in support of this, because I, you know, had a long conversation with Sumay when I first saw that this was on the agenda. He was our student rep last year. And, you know, I asked him a lot about like what he went through. He did not have a symbolic vote of any kind, but he still was subject to the same criticism. We're saying we want to protect them from now. At the end of the day, until we somehow fix the follow-through on, you know, putting in place our policies on bullying and we actually protect kids that way, trying to limit the amount of voice or power, or their words that they're saying, because technically, they have a voice now. They can say, you know what, if I were a voting member, this is what I would vote for. We're just kind of giving them a space at this point to say, hey, we respect and want to hear your opinion if you are comfortable giving it. We are not demanding it. We are not saying, we're not putting rules on abstaining for them. They can literally at any time just be like, you know what, this subject's too much for me. I think by us standing in the way of that in the name of protecting them, we are actually hindering their growth and their progress. And sometimes the most loving thing we can do as adults is let people go through the lessons they need to go through. And if they are looking seriously at doing politics in the future, I would much rather them see what politics looks like here in this boardroom, where it's not nearly as bad as it is in the State House. And at the end of the day, you're still going to get the same amount of hate, because people do it, and it stinks.
I have a question after your comment, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. So we, this was a large part of our meeting last week. I shared the concerns, because I've been on this board for six years, and I've seen a significant level of vitriol and racism directed at our student board members before COVID, during COVID, and after COVID. And we've been lucky. We've had a diverse group of kids run to be board members and serve as board members. And Sumay Sahu, who was our last year's board rep, who is going to Dartmouth, came back to talk to our group about his experiences on the board. And this is one of the things that he and Mr. Castellano had wanted to do, was one of the things that he had wanted and not been able to do while he was on the board. And he talked about his experiences as a person of color on the board. And his, I'm paraphrasing him, but his point at the end of the day was not having a vote didn't protect me from the vitriol. And the vitriol didn't stop me from saying what I needed to say to represent the students of the district appropriately, based on the information that he had gotten. There are offline conversations that I've had with prior board, student board members, about what we can do as a board to help support them and to help mitigate some of the effects of the community. Anybody who's been to these meetings for a long time has noticed that the student board members used to sit at the end of the U. Now they sit up in the middle, because during COVID, we had people coming up behind the U, and it simply wasn't safe. But I don't, for me, at the end of the day, the students asked me to say yes to giving them greater voice on our board. And so for me, it came down to supporting that they know better than I do about what that experience is. So that's where I'm at. I encourage the board to support this, but at the end of the day, everyone has to vote their conscience.
So the piece that I wanted to state, because I also think that if you guys are asking for something, you've weighed the consequences and you've put thought and perspective behind it. What I would like to do to support you even more in this is to really come up with a concrete plan for what the board member student liaison does, how often they're checking in with you, making sure that you're coming to meetings prepared with what you want to say, and that if you are going to be making a vote on, I mean, you guys typically speak about kind of the more weighty votes anyway, like teacher contract, GPA, that kind of stuff. You guys have always spoken up. But I think if we're going to be best supporting you in this change is we have to make sure that the person who's giving you that supervision is following, is being consistent with how they're meeting. I know you're, I'm not saying you're not doing it, Mr. Claffey. I'm just saying. Yeah. But I think we can do it as a board is creating maybe a policy or a procedure or a guideline about what the responsibility of the student board member liaison does for you. And that they need to be aware, if you guys, your emails are not public, your phone numbers are not public, your addresses are not public. If you're getting contacted in any way, you need to let your liaison know so that we can inform administration and then have guidance check in with you and just make sure that you're safe within your school. So I support this, but I want to add in what the board's response needs to be consistently.
Would it be reasonable to have this take effect in January as of the next board? That gives us time to come up with, you know, the procedures laid out for the student liaison? I mean, I hate to make you guys wait, and especially because that kind of ruins it for you guys. But I definitely want to make sure that we do it right.
No, we can absolutely do that. And I think, like I said, with most of the weightier votes, we do, you guys speak up about it. If you want to make sure that I know that you have something that you want to specifically state, because I think sometimes I say, do any board members have any comments or questions? Is if you guys have something specific that you want to say, like email me ahead of time, and I'll say, I'd like to, you know, cue you guys in, just so that we're held in what you want to do. So maybe not the actual vote just yet, but you are always welcome to say what your support is in regards. So amended to start January, does that sound?
I can put that as a friendly amendment. So the motion, and then, I know Ms. Brown's been waiting. The motion is to approve...
Eyes aren't working back here.
To approve BBBF with the change from symbolic vote to non-binding vote, and for this policy to take effect, for these policy changes to take effect, January 2024.
Upon the completion of board member liaison roles and responsibilities.
A policy now, so Mr. Poska...
It's not a policy, it would need to be created. Congratulations, Mr. Poska.
I wrote it on my queue of...
Can I speak to this amendment? I think we're denying, assuming this passes, we're denying them half of their term. And I think it's a matter of choice. They ran for office. My guess is they're going to run for other offices. And if they don't feel comfortable, they don't have to vote.
Yeah, I agree.
So I don't understand, we're not forcing them. We're not putting them in a position of harm. They can simply abstain. So I don't support this amendment, and I do support this policy change.
I'll make it an amendment, then.
We'll vote on the amendment first, and then we'll come back to the policy.
Indefinite.
Okay, so he's whispering.
There, say it out loud.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
So the current members' term ends in December?
Yes. And you guys have already voted on the new student reps, right?
No.
Just class officers? Student reps are September?
It'd be nice to give our current members a chance to experience it.
Yeah.
For the incoming. I just don't understand what's the argument to postpone this?
Okay.
My thought for postponement would have been to give the time to create the official responsibilities for the liaison and to hopefully give time to warm up our friendly board members that don't necessarily agree just yet. I'm being honest.
As the liaison, I'm ready.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Claffey, but I do, I just want to make sure that the roles and responsibilities are present for, so the board has some responsibility. Well, I mean, we always have a responsibility, but I'd like to get that written down. I support the policy as it's presented without the amendment. I also support it with the amendment. And I will, I'm going to lean on you and your symbolic vote, Dante.
Yeah, I definitely support it as, I would support it as presented, just because, I mean, again, I already feel like I can talk to Mr. Claffey whenever I want. And I know there's no policy written in place right now, but I know we could probably work on the development of that. And as Warren and I's term is quickly coming to an end, I feel like it would be good to at least see what it would be like at first.
Can I officially rescind my amendment? And...
Yes, fine.
I would love to have both Mr. Warren and Mr. Castellano be in on creating the roles and responsibilities for the liaison.
Ms. Brown's been waiting. Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I'm going to support this. I go back probably six or seven years ago when Haley Sweeney and Josh Gao came to us with all the research they had done on class rank. Committees were formed. We got so much information from our students. And I think it just passed within the last year. And I think it was a big improvement. And it was because of those two students and the people that followed them advocated for the change is where that came from. So I'm going to support this, because what I'm seeing from us, our students, makes me very proud of our school district and of our students. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? You've removed your amendment off the table. Nobody seconded it anyway, correct? Correct. So we'll go back to the original motion. Ms. Raymond made it, and it was seconded by Ms. Darling. So all those in favor of approving policy BBBF, student members of the Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
With the change, the symbolic vote to non-binding.
Oh, symbolic vote to non-binding.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then we'll just put on a policy committee to come up with that. I don't think we need to vote for that. That's just asky-to-do. Okay. Congratulations.
He can vote now.
Yeah.
Would you like to cast a symbolic vote?
I don't have a box for him yet, but I can make one. Okay. I move that we approve policy EHBR Local Records Retention Schedule.
Second?
And just to speak to it very briefly, this policy is very long. Last month, we approved EHB, which was our policy on records retention, and really went through that we have to retain certain records, basically. EHBR is six pages long, and it is a chart essentially that goes and breaks down exactly who is responsible for which records and how long they must be retained. So if anybody has a question about, you know, a record and, you know, who's in charge of it, this chart makes it very clear, based on job descriptions. And that, I can't imagine how much work that was for administration, so.
I think it was a lot of work, but it also, to your point, it obviously clarifies the process, so, you know, you know where to go and streamlines and hopefully questions can be answered easier than, I don't know, I'll get back to you.
For all that work. Any comments or questions on this? What is it, a six-page document? Right? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing policy EHBR Local Records Retention Schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve policy CCA Organizational Chart.
Second?
And this is just an update. The board has approved some new positions over the last year. And Mr. Poska and Dr. Andre have updated our org chart to reflect the actual positions that we have.
Brown?
Are there any other significant changes to this workflow chart? I was trying to find them, but I wasn't, except for the new positions. Are there any things that moved around?
Dr. Andre can speak to that.
So the major change was moving the Director of Special Education over from the elementary assistant superintendent to, under the superintendent. The rationale behind that is all the other directors that are K-12 are under the superintendent. And so that's the rationale behind that. For example, like the Director of Athletics is on the secondary. Director of Title I is under the elementary.
Darling?
Why was that position originally under the assistant superintendent for elementary schools? And I don't know the facts on this particular question, but I feel like a lot of the focus of our, of those services are in elementary schools, not as much in the higher grades, but-
I would disagree.
I was going to say, I literally don't know any of the data on that.
No, it's a pre-K through 12 system, so I think it's, again, a district-wide kind of conversations, and I don't think it's because of any, you know, like the quality of the program, but just as we were having the conversations of the organizational chart, it's just all pre-K through 12 directors report to the superintendent.
I'm just, I'm looking at in the packet, when was the last time, so if we update the organizational chart tonight, when was the last time it was updated before?
January 2017, so pre-COVID.
COVID, okay.
Well, then, I mean, our practice has changed significantly over the last, trying to count how many years, that is, six years, so it was due for an update.
Yep. It just wasn't written there, and I didn't know if it was a new, I didn't think it was a new document.
Nope.
Okay.
And if I just may, when we were reviewing this at Central Office, with the level of specificity, like how much do you go into assistants or different roles and responsibilities? So I think that's going to be the next step of, you know, who reports to the Director of VLL, who reports to the Director of Special Education, because those are, I think there was a three new positions already, but it's not captured here. So, you know, what's the level of where we're going to go, you know, how many assistant principals are the high school principals, you know, supervising? So we didn't want to make it too overwhelming, but again, just a quick update.
And this does fall in line with the presentation earlier about clarifying roles and, clarifying roles and expectations and having role clarity because it helps the entire team move better. So this kind of falls in line with their recommendation, so it seems like we're hitting the ground running.
I agree, I think this is more logically streamlined, so.
And just one other big note on, for the other big change, was this, the old org chart from January 2017 is so old that the assistant superintendents were not secondary and primary grades, it was assistant superintendent for curriculum and assistant superintendent for accountability, which is, I mean-
I mean, that's middle schools.
I don't remember the last time anybody used either of those titles, so it was due.
Yeah. All right. Ms. Darling?
That's actually almost exactly what I was going to mention, is looking here at the assistant superintendent curriculum and instruction versus assistant superintendent accountability and assessment, and I was thinking maybe that was why the Director of Special Education ended up under curriculum and instruction. What about the Director of Title I Services? Has that been moved?
No, it's still at the elementary.
All right.
Right, because there's only Title I's in elementary.
Yep.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions?
Should we officially change the superintendent's curriculum and instruction versus accountability and assessment?
It is in the newest organization.
In the new one.
Okay, never mind.
Okay. See, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the, sorry, I lost my agenda, approving policy CCA, the organizational chart, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. And then the last policy we have tonight, we have a little edit, and so I'm actually going to hand it over to Mr. Poska to give us the language so that I can write it down appropriately, based on a meeting that he had just Friday with the principals.
Sure, this is policy JICT regarding the student-parent guiding Chromebook agreement. First, I want to thank the policy committee, along with Ms. Johnson, who was an active participant in the meeting, for all the feedback regarding this policy as we got into it. And I think as we delve into our next step here, I'm really excited about what it can be to promote some accessibility and equality for all of our students at the secondary level. One of the recommendations that we are making goes to the first paragraph, and the verb it should be, "All students will be issued a district-owned device. There will be times when students will be required to utilize this device in the class at the discretion of the teacher." So that would replace the, what is in red right now in the policy. We did have a lot of conversations about, you know, potential opt-outs, we had some conversations about what it would be like, what that would look like in the classroom, but I think one of the things that has came up is we talked about this with our principals and with our Director of Digital, Coordinator of Digital Learning, are the needs for some of the devices and platforms that are only going to be uploaded to our Chromebooks, and the need for the students to have accessibility to that for specific things. Quick example would be, for example, the middle school level, if a student is taking an iReady test, that is only going to be uploaded onto the district-owned device. So students will have to have access to that device in order to complete that test. There's a variety of other examples, but there's an example of why all students will need to be assigned a district-owned device.
All students six through 12?
Six through 12.
Oh, all right. So my motion is to approve JICT as amended this evening with the change to switch the red line to, say, all students six through 12 will be issued a district-issued device, and then I didn't write the rest of it down, that's too fast.
There will be times when students will be required to utilize the device in the class at the discretion of the teacher.
I have a follow-up question, I think it was touched upon in the meetings, but one of the neat things about the world these days is our textbooks can be available electronically. Are we able to provide the textbooks on the Chromebooks, and then we can decrease the cost that we're spending on texts that are going home? I mean, I think I still have, I probably shouldn't say this, I think I still have a U.S. history textbook-
I don't think they want it back.
I'm afraid to even throw away because they're going to find me, Mr. Claffey.
They are now.
But I think that was like $175, and I could not tell my mom about that.
Think this is a Seinfeld episode about that, and we'll be talking about that later? You know, certainly, the, you know, the discussion is to, you know, start utilizing more of the online platforms as we get into that, and again, as we, you know, start this, you know, grade six to 12, hopefully expand it into the, you know, at some point to the elementary level, again, to promote that accessibility and equality for all. So this is an exciting step for us, but yes, to your point, we want to start pushing more of those platforms and opportunities out for online textbooks onto the Chromebooks for our student access.
Perfect.
I just wanted to mention one more thing on this policy change, and I know Ms. Johnson and Finance Committee discussed it, Finance first. One of the things that the district has asked us to do is to eliminate the $25 rental fee for Chromebooks, and so you'll see anywhere that there was a fee mentioned, it has now been eliminated in this policy, so students six through 12 will be issued a district-issued Chromebook when they go back to school next week, or maybe the first week in September, depending on the rollout, without cost to them. And there's a booklet that will go out for families to explain the responsibilities, and then also in this policy, we're very clear that we expect students to have a level of responsibility towards caring for these Chromebooks, and that there's an expectation that if there is accidental damage or use, like sometimes keys come off and stuff, that we want students to bring those Chromebooks into their schools and let the school take care of any maintenance or repair. So don't, please don't go fixing it on your own, just be open and honest with the school district about how the Chromebook is working.
Any other comments or questions? Darling?
I just want to share the one snag that I found in this policy, and it's one that's affecting me personally as a parent with a 12-year-old boy who I cannot possibly keep eyes on 24/7 and has learned that there are lots of websites out there. These Chromebooks are protected when they're on our networks in the schools, they're not necessarily protected at home, and I do worry about the access, the internet accessibility of some of our families, not every family has access, and to get the Xfinity Affordable Connection Program, which is the cheapest possible program, you have to be without internet for a year to qualify. So I do worry a little bit about the accessibility, and I'm really hoping that schools will work with families on a case-by-case basis to maybe set up something where students don't have to bring the Chromebook home if, you know, it's a situation like mine, where I'm pretty sure that Chromebook will be destroyed very quickly, not even by my, you know, older son, but, you know, his six-year-old brother, who's a troll. So I'm really hoping that schools will be open to working with families, and I'm hoping that we will try to get something in place for hotspots or something for the families that cannot access the internet at home, or choose not to access the internet at home.
I would just, just one comment, I know we're talking six through 12 here tonight, but we are looking to expand. This is not only for secondary students, so we're just starting six through 12 first, but this policy, as we grow our one-to-one, we'll go pre-K through 12. I mean, I don't know if we'll get all the way down to pre-K, but it is a district initiative, but we're just starting at the secondary currently.
I just, I think it's important to have the grade level in the policy so that we don't have, you know, parents of first and second graders having the expectation that they're going to have a device that we don't have.
No, I agree now, but I just want the board to know that we're not going to limit this, but over time, it will have to get adjusted. Yeah, perfect.
Mr. Poska and I adjust things all the time.
I like to think that with that adjustment and the time it takes to make the adjustment, we'll be able to come up with things in place to provide internet accessibility and provide better network security, because we cannot be expecting our families to all, you know, somehow keep their eyes on two screens at once every single moment, and as of now, it's not recommended for a child to be unsupervised on the internet until 13. I don't know about y'all, I only have two eyes.
There's some, we, there was, Ms. Raymond can help me remember this, but I think when our two oldest kids started at Elm Street, we went to the, it was like a parents' night or something, and our friend Sergeant Powers was doing the computer, what was it, computer safety class?
Yeah, I think we could probably reach out to the National PD and the Internet Task Force for Crimes Against Children, I forget, I'm saying it wrong, but there was a time pre-COVID when they were doing parent nights in all of the schools, the middle school and elementary schools.
Huge educational opportunities.
And it was Sergeant Powers, yeah, who was coming out to do it, along with the SROs. So it was really helpful to parents, I know, and also kids to go to those, so.
And I think one of the neat things that he suggested was, if your kids are using a device, is you make a designated spot for them to use it, so like it's always at the kitchen table. I know it's unrealistic.
No, no, I love it, if only because-
My kid heard a police officer say that and was like, but Mom.
Exactly.
But they're also scaredy cats, so I'm fine with that. But there are ways, we can probably get some of that education in about how we can support parents managing these devices, because the reality is, if something happens to it at home, they're on the hook for replacing it, which I think is in the policy.
Yeah. So yes, the policy says we're not charging for the Chromebooks, there's not a rental fee, but if you take a Chromebook and destroy it through, you know, negligence or malintentions-
Orange soda.
There could be a fee for that, so.
Yeah. So we can, it's out there, we can probably just put a link, I'm guessing, on the website, but, okay, seeing no other comments or questions in regards to this policy? Johnson?
I'm just waiting to vote.
Sorry.
Ready?
Let's move the question.
I, I'm doing that. So all those in favor of approving policy JICT as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
That's all I've got. Next month, policy will be working on, I don't actually know what policy we'll be working on next month, so I have no-
Are we going to do another working session like last time? I really enjoyed that.
I don't, I don't know. I know Mr. Poska's got some things in the works that administration needs, so he and I will sit down and talk about it.
Yep. Okay. So now we'll hand the floor over to Ms. Gilio for Human Resources.
Good evening. The Human Resources Committee met earlier this evening. I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR Committee meeting held earlier this evening.
So moved.
Second. Gilio made the motion, Ms. Oden seconded it. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations of August 21st, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the personnel recommendations of August 21st, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm recommending that we approve the administrative recommendation to elect Patricia Flynn to the position of Assistant Principal at Maine Dunstable for the 2023-24 school year at an annual salary of $88,500.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any comments or questions? She was here earlier and spoke to her journey into this new position, and I'm sure in four seconds, we're going to say congratulations. So all those in favor of approving Patricia, oh my gosh, Flynn, I'm like Kennedy, Patricia Flynn. Long, out of my head. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, congratulations.
There are no other recommendations from tonight's HR meeting.
Okay, thank you. So this brings us up to new business, so I will throw the conch shell to Dr. Andre.
Excellent, thank you. For this first agenda item, I'm looking for the board's consideration for a recommendation to support a ELL multilingual resource at the high school. It's a recommendation that didn't make it to any subcommittees. This ELL English 3D program has just recently been approved by the Department of Justice as a resource that we can use, and that's what caused some of the delay. Just a little bit of background around this resource, it is, again, a 9 through 12 curriculum approved by the Department of Justice, it is offered by, or through, in Mifflin High Court. Some of the evidence-based practices contained within the program is to augment core English classes with a dedicated English language development period, extend prior knowledge of language and content, explicitly teach language elements, utilize consistent instructional routines, model verbal and written academic language, orchestrate peer interactions and clear language targets, and monitor language production, providing timely productive feedback on verbal errors. Again, this resource will be paid through EsR, three funds, in total, $129,440.50.
Comments or questions?
I'll make the motion. All right. I move to approve the purchase of the Houghton Mifflin English 3D for $129,440.50 to be funded by the EsR2 grant.
Second.
Now, comments or questions? Is this something we own indefinitely after we pay for it once, or do we have to continue to purchase?
I'm sure there'll be upgrades over time.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So the next new business is really, we started the conversation already during public comment, it's really the opportunity to have a discussion around the elementary music program. So just, again, I think there's been a lot of conversations going on, and I think this is a good opportunity, like, for what's the why? And so as we're looking at our instructional time at the elementary school, we're looking at access and opportunity for all students to core instruction. So the DOJ has- So the DOJ has, you know, stipulated that we need to hold sacred our core instructional time. So that's where some of the changes are going to, going through on when are students being pulled, whether it's elementary chorus class or a band class or any other subjects in which students may get pulled. I'll let Dr. Softy speak as well to this matter, but this is what we're trying to correct. As stated earlier with Tony and Brienne, we did have a great meeting this afternoon about what are possibilities in looking at solutions through a different lens. And I think today was a good start on how do we move forward. I think we're all in agreement that we think our music education program is incredible. Chorus and band classes are valuable to our students, and then how do you balance that going forward? So we did come up with possible ways and really starting at the building level between the building principals and our band and chorus teachers and our music teachers on what does that look like, as well as balancing what does core instruction look like? When might there be good times to pull students? Whether it's through different flex periods and, or is that where the community turns around and says, "Yeah, we can do it before and after school"? So it might look different in different schools, depending on the community. But that was just a start of our conversation today. But really, the why, I think, always needs to be communicated. And then going back to, it is access and opportunity for all students. So if a student, we'll give the example, if chorus is happening during a block that's an English block or a math block, but I'm a student with an IEP or I'm a student with ELL, do I have the same opportunity to go to chorus? Or am I excluded, right? So again, I think as we're having these conversations, I think we need to look at that schedule imbalance, balancing what we can do. I don't think we're trying to take away from our music program, but I think at the same time, we're trying to strengthen our core instruction. So this is where, I think, together through collaboration, we might find different solutions through our collaboration, but also have a general understanding. What are the obstacles? What are the parameters that are getting in the way of those solutions? So again, I think the first that we have to look at is access and opportunity to tier instruction and what students might not have that opportunity if they're getting pulled for a different class, such as band or chorus. So will it come back to say, you know, students aren't reading because they don't have access to core instruction? And that's some of the why behind it. Dr. Softy, if you want to?
Yeah. So I think, again, just to kind of reiterate what Dr. Andre had said, nobody is saying that music education is not important, just like we know PE is important. Having, making sure that our kids are active is important, making sure that our kids can have creative outlets. All of those things are very important. So I'm just going to give you some facts. Each day at the elementary level, we have 385 minutes in our school day. 270 of those minutes are dedicated to academics. That's approximately, if we follow the schedule exactly, 4.5 hours of learning time each day. Each day, we also have 115 minutes of non-academic time. We dedicate 250 minutes, or 50 minutes a day, every single day to PE, music, art, library, media. So I want to be clear, nobody is eliminating music. That's not accurate. What we have been required to do by the DOJ, and I think it's a good thing, is we were forced to look at our schedule and make sure, like Dr. Andre had said, that every single student is getting equal opportunities when it comes to core instruction. In the DOJ settlement, the Department of Justice cited 19 times core instruction and specifically cited, I think, in violation three, the fact that we were denying our English learners to Tier One instruction. They were being denied access consistently to core instruction. And they identify what core instruction is, reading and writing, science, math, and social studies. We have been afforded an opportunity to be able to take a humanities approach when it comes to our ELA block. We are committed to during our ELA block, building knowledge for 60 minutes. So that leaves us with a little bit of flexibility within our schedule, because we are, again, recognize that that band and chorus are important in addition to the music block, art block, PE block, library-media block that we already have embedded in our school days. We have two 60-minute flex blocks. We also have, so we have two 60-minute flex blocks. We obviously have time before and after school. And then one of the opportunities that we talked about today potentially, and certainly this would have to, the other UA teachers would have to be in agreement. We talked about having flexibility for students during their UA block. So a for example would be, and this might actually open up a little bit of a can of worms, but it might actually also allow for some more flexibility and opportunity for students. So instead of a student just having to make a decision between can I learn this math concept or can I work on, you know, improving reading comprehension, they might, they might twice a month, I believe, right? I make that up, twice a month, I think, elect to maybe not go to an art class and instead go to chorus and go to band, so that we're not picking core academics over unified arts. It's over and above. But I also just want to make sure that we're, I want to make sure that we're also touching upon, you know, something else. As important as band and chorus are, the other UAs are just as important. You know, everybody is talking about kids finding a creative outlet when they're in school and feeling that sense of belonging. We know that that happens through our sports teams, right? We talked, somebody talked today about cross-country and different opportunities. So, you know, I want to be careful about, about, about putting too much emphasis on one content over another, because I think that they're all very much important. But I do think that we can have some creativity when it comes to our schedules, because we do, we do want to have kids, we do want our kids rather to have these opportunities. One of the reasons why we're not going to pull students out of our win block, which is essentially our intervention block, is because that would, that would result in discrimination. So if we have students who need to have service minutes, whether it's because they're multilingual learners or because they are identified, those students would be excluded from these extracurricular activities. And honestly, it's a violation of federal law. I mean, this is not because somebody is determining that music isn't important or somebody is putting too much emphasis on academics. This is really, we need to make sure that we are following what the law says. And again, in our DOJ settlement, the first act that they cite is the Equal Educational Opportunities Act of 1974. And that is where we have been kind of failing our kids for failing to provide that access. Like I said, 19 times, that was mentioned in our settlement. So that's where this comes from. I want to make sure everybody understands the why. Nobody is eliminating music. That was never proposed. And if we can find a way to incorporate band and chorus during the school day, we can. But I also want to say that, you know, the law states that we have to make sure that we are offering unified arts. And music is a part of that. And we are absolutely still offering music opportunities to every single one of our students. This is over and above what we are required to do, and it's over and above what we are already doing. So, you know, if we have some limitations with our schedule based on our staffing, I can't speak to that. But I can speak to making sure that we are adhering to federal law.
Ms. Gilio?
I'll try not to talk too long on this. It's a subject that's very near and dear to my heart. And before I came to tonight's meeting, I was concerned totally about the equity for all our students. And, you know, music is a universal language. Chorus and band are an important part of music education. And we need to have that happen in the elementary schools so that we do have it in the middle schools and we have it in the high schools. I'm speaking from the experience of playing French horn in the high school marching band, having had a father who was a musician for many years, a husband who was a musician, and a daughter who went through the national public schools and became a music teacher and taught music for 19 years and has her name on a plaque at the South High School, okay? But also, I'm a retired school librarian. So I just, I want to see all of the children have the opportunity to do this during the school day. I was heartened to see that Charlotte Ave came up with some good suggestions today. So my whole attitude about this kind of changed during the course of the meeting tonight, because I think, at first, I thought we were between a rock and a hard place, but that doesn't seem to be the case. And it seems like we can make some recommendations. As a former school librarian, if I had a child who needed to miss a few library classes because of chorus and music was something that inspired them and made them feel good about themselves, I would be more than happy to work something out. And I think the UA people in general have always tried to work together as a team. So I want to say that I'm more heartened than I was. I thought tonight's meeting would depress me. And now I'm not feeling that way. So thank you all. Thank you.
Brown?
Thank you. Thank you guys for so much for clarifying. I think it's really important. I was a band kid and a stage kid and an athlete and kind of liked to participate in all the things, student government, all the things. And so, and my kids, my own children fall into that category as well. And so I think it's really important that we keep those opportunities available for students, but also making sure that we are, making sure everybody isn't breaching their potential or their core academics, because that's going to make all the rest of these things more successful. I think this is actually creating a good opportunity for some good conversations around student choice, even at younger ages, where it's usually not available until they hit middle school or high school. And I think that's really got some positive elements to it and to also address the necessity we have of reading and ELL rigor in our schools. So I would actually just like, I mean, to the board, I would like, if this is okay with the administration, could we move this discussion to curriculum evaluation as a next step? Have an update on where we're going to go with this? If we need to put a steering committee? And/or we need to have an update next month? What the solution is? Would that be acceptable to the board? I would, I would be happy to take it up as the chair of the Curriculum Evaluation Committee.
As a follow-up or to stop discussion this evening?
Well, I think we could get into more depth, like a deeper discussion, not at a full board meeting, but we could, I mean, we can continue discussion this evening. But I would love to really get into the finer details of what they spoke about in the collaborative meeting and also in what the administration proposal is before we, I mean, we're all super smart experts up here and we, if we keep throwing out great ideas. I think it would be, I would love to speak about it. Have, have a deeper discussion in curriculum.
Whoa. Whoever talks first?
Hi. So I actually agree with the idea of sending it to curriculum, not to prevent any discussion, but I would love to hear more about what some schools have come up with for ideas. Other schools, same thing as earlier. It's great to take those good ideas and spread them along. My own son is, used to be, a really big violinist during elementary school thanks to what is now Upstring, used to be sinfonetta. And I know he would not have tried it if it wasn't an after-school activity, because he didn't want to get made fun of. So I do want to point out, there are students on every edge of the spectrum, and my hope is that what we can come up with will help every single child, because it is my belief that music is kind of that string that holds all of us together. And the more opportunities we can get to allow these kids to experience that in school and out, the better.
Raymond?
Thank you. So this, this discussion that has popped up over the last few days was surprising to me, because I didn't realize that it was an issue in our district. But I also didn't know that there's not consistency in the elementary schools when it comes to band and chorus. So my kids went to Birch Hill Band, I don't know about chorus, but band was during the day. And as a parent who worked full-time at a job that started at eight, when school started at nine, like, there wasn't a way for me to come in half an hour early and drop them off. Like, that's, our daycare and our transportation situation was not flexible that I could have had my kids do that. And both of my kids stuck with band through COVID, doing it on the computer in their rooms, you know? So I didn't know. And so I guess I'm looking for information from admin. I didn't know that Birch Hill was apparently different than some of the other schools, because having talked to Ms. Bishop this weekend, Sunset Heights didn't have lessons during the day, right?
Not lessons, lessons were after school.
Right, lessons were after school. My kids had their lessons during school. So I'd like to know what the, what the situation is across the district, because that makes me concerned for whether or not there are inequities in access to some of these things. And just as, as another discussion point, and I'm not opposed to sending it to curriculum at all. I think it's good to have a deeper discussion, especially when we clearly have misunderstandings in amongst the board and in the community. You know, do we have enough? I, I mean, we're talking about enough hours in the day. Do we have enough time in the day? Like, is this a discussion that we need to have at some point? Because the other thing that has come out, I know that there was a very brief discussion at curriculum back in June or May about some schedule changes. And we're losing recess for some of our kids, too, which is, which is challenging. And I don't, I don't know that the board and the community was aware that that was really happening, because it was kind of in a, in a curriculum meeting and it didn't get addressed at the full board. So I'm just worried about, about making sure that we are meeting what the Department of Justice has told us we have to do, because it's the right thing to do for those kids. You know, and some of the scientific evidence-based changes that we're making are the right thing to do. But we also have to make sure that there's equity across the district and that people aren't being left out aren't being left out because of their economic situation at home. And maybe that means we need to talk about busing. I don't know. Like, if it has to be after school, can we help families with that? I, I don't know what the answer is. But I'd rather have it in school everywhere.
Johnson?
Thank you. Again, there's inconsistencies in the district. Just talked about that somewhat with special ed, and now we're talking about this with music. When my kids were in school, that's many years ago, because I'm a grandparent already, they did band at Ledge Street during the school day. Great teacher. He was fantastic. Two out of three of my kids. We have to be within the guidelines of Department of Justice, because otherwise we're going to find again. So we have to, everything has to be within line with the feds. That's number one. We need to sit down and get a program going, figure out what we're going to do. Administration has to give us some options here for the board to review and go with it, to make sure every elementary school has the same options now. So we are consistent. It's sad that we're beginning school and we don't have a plan in place right now. You know, we just found out about this. So, you know.
Okay, hold on.
The government, the federal, in case people don't realize, government wheels run very slow here. We're not, we try to be speedy when we get the information, but if the feds don't give it to us in a timely fashion, then we can't do very much about it. So now that we are aware of all this, hopefully it will go to curriculum, they'll have a meeting. Everybody's welcome to come to the curriculum meeting, it's open to the public, and it'd be great, you know, because we can still get some input at the committee hearings, you know, meetings. And then it comes back to the full board and hopefully we will have a plan, working with administration, and we can get things moving so we won't get that far into the middle of the year. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I have no objection to this going to curriculum committee, but I'm looking for expediency, because we're a week away from starting school. And it sounds like whatever meeting took place today, where all of these ideas started to come out, is like a beginning of something that maybe could be just fast-tracked, and then a proposal could come back to the board before we even have to go through three weeks before we have a curriculum meeting. And then after that, when we have our next meeting, I mean, I think for the, for the teachers, beginning the year with their children, it would be great if they could, could tell them, you know, what's going to be offered. And, and I think, again, it's, it's an equity issue, and, and I just would hate to see either of these to have to take place before or after school, because I think we might lose out on some of our shining stars who just aren't going to get what they need at an early enough age. So that's just my comment on it.
Can I, can I just offer some information? So just so you know what's happening right now, for band, eight schools are offering band before and after school. Four schools are offering band during the day. For lessons, so there's, there's the full band practice, and then there's all, there are also individual lessons. Excuse me?
Group lessons.
Group lessons, okay. Excuse me. Seven schools are offering lessons during the day, five schools are offering lessons before and after school. I guess, what I want to know though is what the expectation is at, at committee. So we have, I'm, I'm looking at our UA, our music schedule. We have, we don't have designated music teachers in all of the schools. If we did, there would be a lot more flexibility and this could be equitable, but we don't. We have people traveling all over. We also can't have people traveling to more than one building. So then, we don't have equity even within the schedules. We have some teachers with a full schedule and some teachers with far fewer classes than the teachers with the full schedule, depending on what, what schools they're in. So we have limitations. I, I just want to be transparent, because I don't know that we can come up with a universal plan. And I also don't know that it's our responsibility to dictate what the priorities are within a school building. You're hearing from a certain group of people, but there might be other folks in other buildings who have other priorities. And that might be reflective of the school community. Do you know what I'm saying? So I don't know that, I don't know that, that I can give you any sort of universal plan or guidance for principals, because that's not my job. The principals run their buildings. I can give them options and let them know that they have two 60-minute blocks that they can, you know, try to work with, if the, the music UA schedule allows, but it's, it's, we're restricted. And then, like I said, I, we can also talk about flexibility within the UA classes. But beyond that, I really can't offer you anything else unless we hire more people.
Gilio?
I'm, I'm just curious, as to, do any of our elementary schools have full-time music teachers or is everyone traveling?
The bigger schools, like Bicentennial, Fairgrounds.
Ledge? No, not Ledge.
They share too.
Because I know in the past, we've had, oh, in the past, we've had full-time.
Do we have the, the music director here right now?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know.
Could he possibly come and answer some of these questions?
Yeah.
So I just, to Dr. So, so, yes. So, I mean, we could look at it. So I think the bigger kind of question to Dr. Softy's point being, I think it's going to be really important for teacher voice, right? And so, not just only being in music, but to your point, as a, as a library media specialist, are you open for a different option? So we could have the, the band and music and music ed teachers meet with the building principal, but I think it's a larger conversation on what's the priority of the school, how flexible I am. So to the point of, should it go to subcommittee yet? I think there's a lot, there's a couple of conversations that we need to have prior. And that is making sure that there's teachers around the table, along with the building principals, to say, this is what I can and can't do, how we can make those adjustments. As Dr. Softy said, we can give guidance, but I think it's going to be that school community and, and the collaboration, again, of that school, how to make the schedule work within those certain parameters. Then it can go back to, you know, a curriculum subcommittee to say, as, as the 12 elementary schools, this is our plan, and we had that buy-in of how it's going to make, how it's going to work. So I think it's, you know, other UAs need to be around that table, just not music. So I think that's important to go from there. And again, what is those parameters? So I think that's the next step. I forgot to mention Tina was at the meeting earlier today, so Tina, Brandon, and Tony, but it was, so the demo schedule, so just timing-wise, is a couple of weeks away. So even for the, the music instruction going, we still have a little more time before we have to look at what is a specific music or, or band kind of schedule. Of course, we can go in there. So it is, you know, the week before school, you know, the building principals might have a couple of things on their mind. So I don't know if anything's going to happen between now and, you know, Labor Day, other than organizing a meeting, who's the right people around the, the table, and then go from there, so that we can start, if we have to modify schedules or anything like that, we can get that out. So I think that's the, the most, the next logical, who needs to be around the table at the building level, to look at this, at the schedules and the parameters that we have to work in.
Ms. Darling?
I'm going to lose my voice by the end of this meeting. Dr. Sarfati, would it be reasonable to ask if you could email the information about, like, which elementary schools are offering it before and after school versus who's offering it during the day, just so I can educate myself when people ask me a million questions?
Yes, definitely. I just need to, I'm going to need to update this, because I know that some changes have happened, but absolutely.
So Mr. Corones is here, and I think he knows the answer to all of these questions. Can we invite him down to answer the, without needing to email later on?
But not necessarily, because some of these changes have been happening internally.
I'd like to get to understand what the overall picture has been. I think the fact that we're all hearing about this, like, days before school is, is starting, we could have had these conversations months ago. So, Mr. Corones, please answer Ms. Darling's questions.
Good evening. We've, we had a discussion today. I brought, I brought a schedule of all the schools that deal with which schools have band during the school day, which have lessons during the school day, and the same with after and before. We were very talked, basically, we're going to, we talked about the demo schedule, which is the instrumental demo, demo we have come in the first, second week of school. And so the kids get to choose, they get to hear all the instruments, and they get to choose, and then we can schedule everything. That is deeply important. We've already talked about this, and he's in the process of doing so. We do have, I do have that sheet available. I can always forward it to the, to the board, and I think I, I gave him, yes. But I can always give you an electronic. But yeah, if you have any questions, please forward, you can ask me right now. I can tell you anything you need to know, so you're not second-guessing yourselves.
How many, sorry. Was she first? Well, I, I was first, actually.
Go ahead, Jen.
How many kids across the district in fourth and fifth grade benefit from chorus and band?
For, yeah. You're the chorus, you're the, you're the chorus.
It's just it doesn't pick up on the microphone, so it sounds like we're staring at the audience, like, hearing voices.
Right, so you guys can use the mics here.
Yeah, if you want to sit down and join us.
Yeah, we'll share. That's what we do.
So chorus at the elementary level, it varies from school to school, depending, oh, hello.
You do have to get obnoxiously close to the microphone down here.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so chorus at the elementary level can vary from school to school.
Please say your name for Tower of the Transcriber.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Tina Lincoln, Three Falls Grove Road.
No.
Charlotte Elementary.
Just title. No, you're not doing public comment.
Music teacher.
Thank you.
So at the elementary level, it will vary from school to school, depending on the size of the school, because we offer it to fourth and fifth. It will also vary depending on whether they offer a fourth-grade chorus and a fifth-grade chorus separately. My guesstimate would be over 600, probably, if I have 68 at Charlotte Ave, which is my biggest chorus, even pre, post, even pre-COVID. And I would hate to see that change. So it depends on the size of the school, but my guesstimate would be over 600, depending on the size of school, total, without the district.
For just chorus?
Just chorus.
For just chorus, yes. Tony Corones, district coordinator for the elementary band program. For the last year's, our numbers for the elementary band in lessons was 398, so 400, 400 kids involved. And like we said, there is eight, eight of the 12 have lessons during the school day. And let's clarify this, it's not the, I have adjunct faculty that come in and they do the lessons for the majority of them. And I have a separate, separate fund for that. Teachers who are classroom teachers that choose to teach their own kids, they can only teach those lessons before and after school, and some do, and we do have those programs. At, of the eight, I mean, Bicentennial, and I could just name them off, we have it here, but that's the concern, is those adjunct faculty I've had for decades. And I mean, we talked about Ms. Mr. Gumas and Mr. Arsenal and not, people that have been here forever, and they're just reliable. I hope that we can retain them, because a lot of them, when they're teaching during the school day, they have, they're, they're, you know, they have music studios, they do things after school, whatnot, so they can't, they might not be able to accommodate after school or before school lessons. That's our fear. So that's our concern. I wasn't going to speak tonight, because it's, it's, it's a lot to take in, and we have a lot of things to, to work on and get this, this accomplished. So I was letting my colleagues speak for us here, but I was wiggling my chair over there, because we need to get you the facts. So, like you said, we can, we can forward do all this, so you all have, you know, transparency with everything's going on. And we've already talked, we had a great meeting today about finding out why this was all happening, for one. And we, you know, of course, we talked about transparency, it's like, if we were known, we could have done this, we could probably have done this ahead of time. And I think we're, right now, scrambling, but we're going to try to work together and get this for the school, you know, the kids in the National School District, keep it going. So, any other questions while we're here?
I don't have any other questions. It doesn't look like anybody has any more questions. Yes, you guys can.
I just want to add one quick thing, just based on something that you said.
Thank you.
So part, again, back to our, back to our settlement, one of the requirements for us is to adopt and implement a comprehensive ELA program, and that's what we have been doing. So this year, everybody knows, we got $300,000, we are piloting CKLA, we're also, we're also bringing back dibbles in all of our schools, and we are having evidence-based interventions within our schools, which is definitely an advancement when it comes to teaching and learning. So as we were going through, and I say we, reading specialists, administrators, teachers, our teachers cannot engage in this work during the school year, so we've been working every single day on getting ready for this coming school year over the summer. And as we were getting ready and making sure that we know how we're going to fit everything in, make sure that everybody has all of the guiding documents that we need, and then going line by line through the settlement to make sure that we're in compliance, that is when we realized that there were these discrepancies and there were these inconsistencies within our schools. Because people started to say, well, hold on a second, we can't have three days of, you know, three 60-minute blocks of science, because science is when our kids are getting pulled out, out for band. So I just want to be clear, this is not a matter of, we didn't want to give anybody notice, or this came out of nowhere. These are revelations that are surprising to me and practices that shouldn't be happening and are happening. And as soon as they came to light, that is when we started having deeper conversations. And that is when we realized that in some of our schools, because this does not affect all of our schools, in some of our schools, we are limiting access to core content and/or we are only offering these opportunities to some students and not others. So I, I just want to make sure everybody understands why this came to light now, because this is when we do our work to prepare for the next school year. So I also have, I would think about a week ago, I sent out guidance for all of the teachers that I didn't come up with unilaterally. It was a collaborative effort with lots of people, lots of experts, and I'll be happy to share that with the board.
Any other comments or questions? So I just, I just want to share, because this, I mean, I'm hearing, you know, Ms. Gilio, Ms. Oden, Ms. Raymond, I think all of us have been touched by music and have our kids involved in it, and we've been involved in it. Having chorus and band in the upper grades at the elementary school has been a practice in Nashua 30-plus years. It sets our entire music department ahead of every other school that's around us. Manchester's the only other one that offers during the day chorus and band in their elementary schools. Our music program is leaps and bounds every other. I want to separate the Department of Justice stuff from the music program. I think by not bringing it to the board, that we needed to look at chorus and band as part of the shift in meeting the Department of Justice regulations, was unfortunate, because it is such a well-embedded program for so many people and so many families. And there are so many people that went on to, you know, be musicians, be music teachers, you know, we have a, one of the kids that we graduated with has a Grammy, like, that, that was the Nashville School District. So I think the fact that this wasn't brought to the board, and it looks like it was a board decision to make these changes, was, was not something that we were aware of, and I think it caught us all off-guard. I think when we're looking at shifting practices within the school district, is we do have to take a look at what that, that historical relevance is. And, I mean, we just heard about it with, with Mount Pleasant, you know, there is a history to our district, and we have to honor that history. I know I wasn't, I'm the one outlier here. But I recognize we have to look at the historical relevance of these programs and what they mean to each individual family and bringing instruments in. There is no scientific study that says introducing kids to music and instruments ruins their mathematical abilities. Like, there's more studies that show that it enhances education. If we were going to be looking at changing the way in which we provide this opportunity, it should have happened much earlier. It shouldn't have come out a week before school started. Kids look forward to doing this program, they start picking their instruments, you know, and their older siblings pick instruments, going to the first day where you get introduced to what kind of, you know, the French horn or the clarinet or the violin. That's a, that's a monument, like, I'm a fourth grader now, I get to pick one of these things. And it's really unfortunate that we are having to pedal our wheels so quickly right now to get this program back up and going. But what I, because what I'm not hearing is that we can continue to guarantee this program happening. What I'm hearing is you're willing to look at it, but I'm not hearing a guarantee that we're able to provide the same opportunities to every child to access band and chorus in the same fashion that they always have. I also struggle with, if we want to add the Department of Justice piece back in, is our kids, our, our second graders, our third graders, they're not sitting in school going, you know what, I don't feel like learning how to read today. They're not the ones sitting in class going, you know what, I don't feel like engaging. I, I just, I never want to read, I never want to do math, I don't care. That's not the students. The students are there, and whether they want to or not, they're, they're actively or passively getting education. And the fact that we're punishing them by taking away this opportunity, it, it feels unfortunate, and it feels like we're setting the kids up to take the blame for their inability to learn in school. I am not in support of moving chorus and band outside of school. I'm not in support of cutting this program at all. If we need to look at adding UAs to every single school so that they have music and art and gym, then we need to look at that. Nashua is only as good as the extracurriculars that we offer, because if all we're going to be doing is having perfect reading scores and perfect math scores, we've just created little robots. little robots. We need to add in the arts piece and the humanities piece, because that's what makes our entire community fantastic. So I really hope, when this goes to CNE, before the instrument program is presented, we have a plan for how these students are going to either be bussed home after school, engaging PTAs so that we can do ride shares, making sure that it's, I would rather it be in school, but there are 100 million ways that we can meet this. And I think it needs to be a focus, because, I mean, we sat here and we talked about what the kids needed because of COVID, and what they're missing, and why we need to keep a school open for the last four months. We need to keep these chorus and band programs in place, because for this exact same reason is the continuity, the looking forward to, and the engagement of, needs to be a priority. And I get that the Department of Justice is in here telling us what to do, but that's not the whole picture. And I think we need to look really hard at what our values are, what our main priorities are. And I think it needs to include arts, and humanities, and literature, and science, and everything. Every student needs to have the opportunity to participate in more than just the reading, writing, and arithmetic of schools. So, I'm just gonna stick around. No, guys, I said even, you can't clap in the audience. Not even for me. Mr. Claffey.
I know you like to have the last word, but...
I will get it.
You will get it back. But you said something that made me open my mouth, or asked to open my mouth, about, there's no, you don't know of a study that shows that music impairs learning. And the only thing I wanted to say tonight in support, I wanted to say this before you all left, and hopefully that'll be soon. Typical band, chorus, always on the stage, I know. But this is serious, and some of you know why this is coming from my heart. I didn't know this. So a few years ago, the American Psychological Association did a study, 2019, and this is what they said. This is a study. Thankfully, it doesn't say what you wanted, or suggest. The children who learned to play a musical instrument for many years, and were now playing in high school band and orchestra, were the equivalent of about one academic year ahead of their peers with regard to English, math, and science, as measured by their exam grades. So I'm all about data-driven decision-making, and I think if it takes a few years, it's going to be more than, welcome to high school, pick up an instrument.
And with that said, I, I don't know, I mean, I would like to put some, some dates in, but I recognize that you guys, you, there was thought put into what needs to happen. This wasn't, to go off nifty-thrifty, a willy-nilly idea done by administration. I know it was done with thought and with care and consideration. I would just like you to go back to the drawing board and come up with a way in which to meet the needs of the students who want to do chorus and band. So I think we're done with this portion of the conversation. Okay? I do, and I, I do want to say that I recognize and appreciate all of the hard work you guys have done. Dr. Sarfati, your ability to tell us in layman's terms what the Department of Justice, many, many-page document states to us, is incredibly important for us to understand. I just, I'm, I'm passionate about this. What can I, what can I say? We all get to pick something.
Can I just add one last word? I just, I don't want to keep blaming the, it's not just the Department of Justice. We have some schools where a quarter of our kids can read proficiently. When you move up to eighth grade, the proficiency declines. Overall, in our district, about 30% of our kids can read. That should be what is filling up our auditorium here, and that is why I'm so passionate about that. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. The fact that most of our children cannot read should be what brings people out here, yelling and screaming at the podium.
She is right, and we should have more of that discussion at this level, and not let it not come to this level. Yes. Maybe what we need to have is, I'll, I'll talk to Dr. Andre about it before I level out unrealistic expectations, but I'll talk to you about it. Raymond?
I have something else.
Oh. Okay, so are we done with the, are you, is the music conversation done?
I think that, I think that there was consensus on the board for where we want admin to go next.
Yes, CNE?
Yeah. Well, or to continue to work on this and to get back to us.
Yes. Yeah, this, this, this is not done. So it can either go back to CNE for September, and then come to the full board after that. That's kind of what I would like it to be.
When's our next meeting, a full board meeting? September what?
September 5th.
September 5th. Plus of Labor Day. Well, that's a good timeframe to at least get some preliminaries, workings in.
I just want to be, like, realistic for, like, I think 10-1, like, it's, like, is on the old set, right? But September 5th, just opening schools over the next two weeks, is going to be, we have, kids are coming. Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, maybe the board meeting after? We can get a little something, a little idea where we're going?
Yeah, I think there's a couple, you know, as we have a, a couple demo dates in, in that aspect, but even when the next curriculum meeting might be, there might be an update there, and then an update at the board. But I just think, you know, the Tuesday after Labor Day right now is going to be a lot of, like...
I know.
So, update, not next board meeting, and, and I, I don't want an update, I want a solution. Not September 5th, but the board meeting after. I, I want to know what the solution is going to be to get this back in our schools.
And that's why I think it's important to have the teacher's voice in that conversation, so.
Yep. Okay. So we have a non-public to go into, however, I'd like to do, I was wondering if we could do second public comment first?
Yes.
I had sent you an email on the 13th with an agenda request, and it's not on the agenda. So given the time, my agenda request...
Can you remind me of what it was?
It was to have a communication from our board to the state department, State Board of Education. I think it will be a discussion, and it's nine o'clock, but it is time-critical, so I'm asking officially that it be put on the agenda for the 5th, because I think we'll have time then, but it's something that a decision needs to be made before the second week of September.
Well, sorry, my alarm...
I'm going to ask to do it now, I have it all, like, prepped on my computer, but I didn't realize it was nine o'clock.
Yes, and, and we still have...
Their coffee wants to go home.
To go into. So let's do second public comment now, and then we'll wrap up with board member comments, and then we will end this meeting, we'll turn the TVs off, and we'll go into non-public after the fact.
It's already up there. Mr. Claffey got it.
Oh. Wow. Yeah.
He was beaming over.
So, first up is Adam Mar...
Marku. I'm new here, I know, it's hard. The X throws everyone off.
I just thought I'd even out my, my inability to read people's handwriting.
If I got a quarter for every time someone said my name wrong, I could retire. And you'd all be happy that I was gone, so...
Go ahead, Mr. Marku.
Marku, for Delory Lane, I'm president of the National Teachers Union. I have two comments on this tonight. Again, after I spoke the first time about these broad allegations of things happening, they came up again about the rampant running crazy of bullying in the Nashville School District. Are there reports? Are there records? Is there information that these educators and myself don't have about how this is happening? Because it implies that the people running our district, whether it be central office, our 17-building administrations, our educators, don't know what they're doing, and aren't keeping our kids safe. So I'm, I'd like to know where this information is, why it's generalized that it's a wide sweeping issue in this district. Do I think it happens? Probably. Everything happens, we all know that, it's not perfect. But you, the painting a picture, again, we did it of special educators, I don't remember the other thing that I mentioned earlier, because it was a long time ago, and now this. I just, I, I, I come every meeting, I know what's happening in this district, but Joe Smith, who's watching, it makes, it doesn't set a picture that this district is competent in what they're doing, and that is far from the truth. Now, four years ago, maybe. Now, we have moved forward, we have competent leadership, we have a board that works together, gets along for the most part, and we're moving forward. And that, I, I've just, it irritates me that it, it's a broad brush that it's everything and everywhere. My other comment is about elementary music, I didn't speak earlier. I was also at that meeting today, I bet you you're surprised by that. There are potentially contractual implications here that we will work through and around with everyone. I agree that this is not just a music issue. While it's, the music is the focus today, the impact on the schedule is everyone in that building. Guidelines around what is appropriate and what is not would be helpful. I am frustrated that this was not something we could have done over the summer, because I think we could have, because I think the skeleton of this, and you all know, I've already commented about how I dislike the rigidness of this schedule, and that you talked about, Ms. Bishop, the getting through COVID and kids having what they needed and all that. I think, like, we didn't, we're not done with that, but I don't think this schedule allows for it. Like, I'm not excited about working snack and all these other things. I think we lose some character of what we can do that is just as important, and I am not downplaying the importance of children being able to read, being able to count, understanding science. Okay? So Dr. Sarfati and I have had all these conversations and all the things, many times, and we still talk to each other, so it's all good. But as an elementary teacher and a parent of elementary kids, I am concerned about how rigid it is, and this goes into it with the chorus and band or other things, that does a disservice. And what I mean by that, when I taught 5th grade, did I tell this story before?
Yes.
About social studies?
I don't know.
Tell it again.
Tell it again, okay. When I taught 5th grade...
You did hit the three minutes of...
All right, real fast. When I taught 5th grade, and social studies was in the afternoon, my block of time with my kids was from 12:00 to 3:25. We had lunch and special before that, right? So I had them all afternoon. We took them out, and we got in trouble, because the initiative that year, Mrs. Oden, you'll probably remember, was one recess at the upper levels. But I had my kids for three and a half hours, so we went out every day, and I got called into the office with my teammates, and I got scolded and whatever. But I'll tell you, the days we did go out, there was more value in the 45 minutes of social studies than I would have had in the hour of social studies. So those are the things that I think, yes, the DOJ is going to say jump, and we're going to say, oh, hi. But those are the things I think they miss by coming in with the above-all-in-do-it approach, as opposed to working with us to figure out what's in the best interest of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina Lesperance?
Hi there. I know this has been lengthy, so I will be brief. My name is Katrina Lesperance. I grew up in Nashua, my mom still lives on Ashland Street, and I live now in Acton. I'm a 2012 graduate of Nashua High School North. My family and I moved to Nashua when I was in the 7th grade. Before that, I had previously attended a private Catholic school, so my parents made the decision for me to attend Nashua Catholic for middle school, thought it was going to be an easier transition. When the time came for me to decide where to go to high school, the answer was very clear to me and to us. Nashua North had an incredible music program, and I was very passionate about music. If I wanted to have an education where I could be exposed to as much arts as possible, there was only one option for me. While I was at North, I was involved in practically every music class and ensemble I could be. I was in marching band, concert band, chorus, concert choir, show choir, and Music Honor Society. I had an internship with Symphony New Hampshire my senior year, and I basically spent every day after school in the music wing. In kind of advance of tonight, I had reached out to many of my high school friends, asking for them to attend tonight that live locally, and many of them could not, because they are actively pursuing careers in the arts in New Hampshire, Boston, New York, and beyond. One of my friends said he would not have had a professional career in music were it not for his elementary school music classes. And I know the same impact can be said for all arts classes we encountered at every level in this district. I went to college for music, something that never would have been possible without Kristen Olsen and Julie Oliver's guidance, support, and belief in me. I work in music today, both as a freelance music director for theater and in arts administration for a local music venue. I would never be doing any of these things if it were not for these people and these teachers that are here. Working with children now as an adult, it is even more clear to me the direct impact that our teachers have on our students, and the importance of preserving their place in students' lives. The skills that I learned throughout my music classes in high school are things that respectfully are not covered in the same way in the core classes, and I'm, they learn a lot in the core classes, but in music classes specifically, you know, empathy, effective communication, and healthy risk-taking are emphasized in a way that you don't get in some of these other classes. Moving music classes outside of the school day at the elementary level is detrimental. It will directly affect enrollment at every level in the district, not to mention disproportionately affect students who do not have access to transportation. I do ask and urge both administration and the Board of Education to strongly reconsider this decision, which it sounds like you are, so thank you. Music is the reason why I chose to attend Nashua Public Schools, and this reputation will undoubtedly be affected if this change goes into effect. And I just urge you to listen, as you have, to listen to the teachers that have volunteered their time, and, and, you know, do always to be here and to advocate for their students, because that's what it's about. So, thank you, and please, you know, listen to what they have to say.
Thank you. Alex Homola? Homola?
It's one of those names.
Homoly is pretty weird.
I know. It's Russian. It's just weird.
I've been bad tonight with the names.
It's okay.
I apologize.
My maiden name was the same way, and people still, it's all good. I just wanted to, to say, I guess, in preparation for tonight's meeting, not here having to do with music, but, oh, sorry, before Jimmy yells at me, Alex Homola, 6A Street. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I, in talking to some people, and I saw the agenda for tonight, and I said, music, whoa, what is happening? And I know I had spoken after the last meeting with Adam, hearing the curriculum changes, and it's something that also is very near and dear to my heart. We have gotten to know each other over these past few months, but I will give you my very quick backstory, because we're all tired. I grew up in Milford, my husband grew up in Milford. We both went through elementary music, middle and high school. We met there, we're married, we have two kids, and I can undoubtedly tell you that that is why. So it's just something to me that, even considering pulling it out of the school, is, is, is beyond. I also, as I'm listening to Dr. Sarfati kind of explain the why, and I love that, thank you, the small child, and we really appreciate it. I think for, for me personally, right, my story is, I know, I have a direct correlation. I said to someone earlier, my mom still has all of my report cards, and when I started music lessons, there is a direct correlation with my grades improving, and my guidance counselor saying that my, you know, attention span and things like this. So core curriculum is important, yeah, totally. Math, music is what helped me learn that. So I think there's, there's a correlation there that just needs to be, we got to remind the Department of Justice then, that, you know, they're related. So I think that's just something that was coming to mind when you were talking about that, is language, ELL students, that's great. We learn English through songs, sometimes, maybe not the appropriate words, but, you know, we do, so...
If we have UAs in every building, permanent UAs, then we could have a lot of cross-curricular planning. Just throwing that out there.
Let's do it. I'm not a teacher, talk to the teachers. That was going to be my, my final statement, is keep talking to the teachers, they're the ones, you know, on the grounds. I, when I have questions, obviously I come here, but also I go to the teachers and just explain what's the why, so, thank you.
Laura Short?
Please stop the music. Please tell me that we're doing this for three minutes.
Please tell me that we're doing this for three minutes. Oh no.
I would love that.
Laura Short, 38 Hawthorne Drive, Bedford, New Hampshire. Um, first and foremost, uh, the multilingual resources voted on earlier, um, I implore you to seek reason into spending money on a platform. Um, currently at the elementary level, we are using elevation already, um, it is a K-12 platform, so something just to consider if we're already using it and quite successfully. Why not use a K-12? Now, I'm a proud member of the UA team at Mount Pleasant and Amherst Street. You may know me as last year's Physical Education, New Hampshire Association, Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Teacher of the Year. What you might not know, yeah, hey, hey, yayo, um, what you might not know, I was the first drum major of my high school. I was all county, all state, TRIAM Honor Society, four years of college, French horn player, duet time, Sharon, okay?
I also played the French horn, so-
We could have- We were trying to guess, trio, love it. Um, to this day, I still participate in my community band, I owe a lot of my success. Tom Geller, Allison Silla, Joe Schaefer, Alan Orloff, if you are watching, thank you. Um, I owe most of my successful, everything I've done to what I did with music. Now, day in, day out, part of my curriculum, physical education, is music. My PTO events, I am the DJ. I'm the PE teacher, I DJ, I am the MC of the events. We can only do so much during the day to increase our students' learning. Our students do, our students deserve so much more with music during the day. Keep music options in the school. Uh, you spoke to access to the internet, that's at home, what about access to and from school? Um, thank you, Mrs. Bishop, actually, for bringing up earlier and acknowledging Mount Pleasant in your discussion, because as a representative of a walking school, huge concern, um, our kids to get there before or after, it really is going to be a hurdle for them. Um, so having that time during the day is really pivotal for them. Um, I personally, I vow to you, I know that we've brought up some research that has been done of what, I, I mean, we know, music, physical activity, we've seen the research, I personally plan on sitting down myself to see if there is any research to speak to what happens if it is outside of the academic hours, so if I can find anything in my, in my resources for where it's during the day versus outside of the school day, please be rest assured, it will be in your inbox.
Thank you. Tina Lincoln again?
Please don't stop the music. Hi, Tina Lincoln, 3 Falls Grove Road, um, music teacher at Charlotte Ave, and the music education coordinator for the elementary level. Um, I wanted to bring up a couple of things. First of all, I know a lot of you probably haven't seen the music curriculum, it's pretty in-depth, I helped rewrite it three years ago, we're still revising, because things are constantly changing, and we always want best practices. But what you may not realize is that music is math. When I teach my students half notes, quarter notes, eighth notes, sixteenth notes, I'm teaching them fractions, I'm pointing out to them that these are fractions, and you see the light bulbs go off in their heads, because they're not just seeing it on paper, they're feeling it in their body, they're playing whole notes and half notes and going, oh, I get it, it's half the time. So music is literature, it's so much literature. So much music is based on stories and things that I, I include every day in my lessons, it's not even a second thought to me now, it's part of what we do. We encourage reading by teaching children to track notes from left to right, we teach them to um, write their words directly underneath the notes, just like you would want them spaced out in a, in a sentence. Um, so these are all things that we encourage in music, we teach them some, some of the things that they learn in reading and math already. Music is history. My students learn about places all around the world through the composers that I teach them, and they're so enthralled by learning about these different people and hearing the music, and hearing music from the 16, 1700s, you wouldn't think that they would be excited about that, but they are, um, because I show them on a map, ooh, this is where this person's from, this is where you're from, could you go on a boat, could you go on a train? And so at the elementary level, this is, this is interesting to them, it's a way for them to learn in a, in a different way, in a different mode, and some students learn better through music, so, that's that soapbox. Um, when we talk about how we're going to schedule band and chorus for the upcoming year and years with our DOJ restrictions, well, I shouldn't even say the restrictions, they're not, they're just expectations. Um, we have to consider that if there are schools in our district that cannot fit it in the school day, no matter what we do, because remember, our schools are not cookie cutters, every school has different programs, every school has a different setup. When you think about chorus, if you want to have chorus offered to your entire grade level, you have to have a room big enough to hold an entire grade level and teach them in a cohesive manner. Um, so if we don't have that, and if we're not able to find a way to do it, then the answer would be that they don't have chorus. And then you think about which schools would that probably impact, which schools have the most programs? It's our lower socioeconomic schools. So what we're doing is we're not giving an equal education to those children, because we're not offering it during the school day. Those are the same children that can't have, don't often have rides, have to take care of their younger siblings, have to have all of these different things that they have to take care of with their families. So we wouldn't be offering them an, an equal education by not offering chorus to them, whereas the other students in the other schools get regular music and they get chorus and band, because it's in the school day. So I just think that's something we have to think about going forward, I think it's doable, I think it's going to take some very um, creative thinking, I think people are going to have to be kind of flexible in, you know, working it out. I, I don't think it's, that it's something that we can't do, but I also think we have to make sure we understand that it's not going to be a one size fits all, we really have to look at every single school individually and work together as a team to make sure we can make this happen for them. Um, so, and, and I, I loved that Mrs. Bishop brought up that for 30 years, we have had chorus offered, chorus and band offered in this district. If one of these schools can't fit within these guidelines, then that school wouldn't be offering it this year, and that is a huge impact to our program. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up.
You did hit your time, though, so.
My time's up?
Yep.
Okay, oh, so, oh, okay, yeah, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Vincent Duval? I'm not even going to ask if I got that right, because I'm pretty sure I did.
Yeah, you were pretty good. Vincent Duval?
Ah!
Music teacher and band director at Pennochuck Middle School. And uh, I'd like to start off by saying just how gratifying it is to see the seriousness and support that pretty much everyone up here has given this subject. Please excuse the somewhat disjointed nature of the things that I've written down, hard to choose where to start, but I would say, um, you know, the programs at the elementary schools, at least where band are concerned, um, aren't all the same, some are in the school day, some aren't, that's been, that's because every school has had, uh, school culture was brought up earlier, and uh, and how uh, the people in those schools have chosen to schedule these things. There's also the issue of um, adjunct faculty availability, or whether the, the, the music teachers who actually work in those buildings teaching the general music classes are also responsible for band and chorus. All of those things are, those things that are responsible for the differences that we have. I think what's most important, though, is that a lot of work has gone into making things work as well for each individual school as possible, and um, and that's important, because if we don't do that, then we're going to make it more difficult for some of our students to access these programs. We can say that, that when we have our general music classes in the elementary schools, we are providing the curricular piece that is music, um, but it's important to recognize also that the band and chorus programs at these schools are really set up the programs that we have later in the middle schools and the high schools, and I think those programs, it's our, our performance ensembles that are the backbone of the music curriculum when you get to middle school and high school. And sort of the general, the other classes um, tend to not be the prominent feature, though they're very important. If we lessen the ability to access the pro, band and chorus in the elementary school, we are going to adversely affect those programs when they occur later on. You know, it's difficult, we have a, I'm going to say, very successful uh, music program in Nashua, and it's just uh, this is not the first time that I've been up here addressing the fact that, that there was a consideration of perhaps weakening the music program to prop up something else that wasn't working as well, and I just don't think that that's ever a formula that really works. You, it doesn't make sense to take away from something that's successful, um, to try it, as, as your, your means of addressing something that's not working as well. Um, and saying that we have a successful program in Nashua, this is a program, it's the product of years of effort and tradition that goes back way more than 30 years, Ms. Lincoln, okay? Pops Wilson in 19, the 1930s, and unbroken line of, of band direct, high school band directors, all the way up to Mr. Coronas. Um, oh, and I'd also like to point out that I'm a French horn player, and Kristin Olson's a French horn player, and there are more French horn players in this room right now than I've ever met in my life.
Just to let you know, we did hit the three minute, I'm sorry, we did hit the three minute mark. On that note-
Oh, boy. Um, I guess the last thing I'd like to do, is, is address is the uniqueness of the ensemble experience relative to, I, I am such a believer in breadth of education, the, the intricate connect, and we talk about depth of knowledge all the time, but breadth of knowledge is huge, um, and, and it's so intricately tied to depth of knowledge, and I feel like we could have kids in a math class for, for twice the amount of time, but they wouldn't learn as much as when they encounter these con, these same concepts in other contexts, that's so important, and we are such a huge part of that, and the unique, the uniqueness of the ensemble experience, um, you know, well, let me go back to something here. Ensembles have the things that anyone would claim are important in any facet of education. The people who are participating, students, parents, teachers, the broader community are vested in this program, and uh, the Nashua community has been vested in the existence and success of the band and chorus programs in our schools, I, as I said, for decades. Our participation in parades, concerts, football games, community events, and music festivals are not mere entertainment, they are activities which foster community, collaboration, and mutual appreciation for one another. I think we can agree that all of these things are sadly lacking, but sorely needed in our society these days. Um, I, I'm going to end it there, because I, it's hard to tell what I've covered and what I haven't. But thank you for hearing what I have to say.
Yeah. Uh, Kitty Ballu- It looks like a B-A-L-L-O. Oh, see, I, I saw an RE there.
I'm Katie Ballu, I'm the music teacher at um, Amherst Street School, I teach K through V general music, I teach fourth grade, fourth grade, fifth grade chorus, fourth grade, fifth grade band, and I also teach intensive needs adaptive music, and I also travel. I am the unicorn of the music department. I do a little bit of everything, and I teach at a Title I school. So when I first heard about the possibility of moving band and chorus to before and after school back in the spring, when the DOJ schedule was first proposed and first came out, I knew that was going to impact my, our program and our, my kids, because we already struggled with the after-school lessons, with attendance, because they don't have transportation. I had one child last year who almost didn't participate in band because they could not have transportation, and they couldn't afford the 21st Century program after school. We had to have a social worker step in to have, within the process of getting a scholarship for that child to attend the 21st Century program for that one day, so that they could access that late bus for the 21st Century program. Otherwise, they would not have been able to participate in band. It's, it's so important to me, and I am very uncomfortable talking in front of adults, I am more comfortable talking to 50 children than I am in front of here, but this issue is so important to me, because these kids need these groups, and they tell me all the time. I had kids show up and tell me, I get to see you three times today, because I had chorus in the morning, I saw their class for music class, right, and during the day, and then I saw a band at, at the end of the school day. They were so excited to get to see me three times a day. It's important, they need this, and I appreciate that so many of you are supporting this, because I was honestly terrified that this was going to go away, and we would lose this for our kids, because they need it, and they need it during the day. Thank you.
Hey, that is it for first and second, can you pass it on to Ms. Bishop? Okay, so this brings us up to our board members' comments, and then we will um, go into our non-public from there, but um, where should I start? Ms. Darling, we'll start over there this time and go around.
It's usually safer to not give me any more time to think about what I want to say. Um, Mr. Markhu, I do, do want to let you know that I sent you a link to where you can find the report on restraints and seclusions for the state of New Hampshire, um, that way you can see what numbers I was looking at. And I would love to hear your thoughts on what we can do to improve after, if you have the time. As for any other broad comments that I've made on bullying issue, which I know I've made quite a few tonight, um, I don't know how things were four years ago, because I wasn't paying attention to Nashua School District four years ago, but two years ago, we had a sexual assault, last year we had knives and a BB gun.
But not all of this is public not, information, so maybe we not-
How about I'll just limit it then to the stuff that I physically have seen?
It still involves students, maybe we do, I just, it's a really, I, I want to hear what you have to say, but I also want to respect-
Being very careful of privacy and student involvement-
Can I just like stop you if I feel like you're getting?
Yes, absolutely. I have personally witnessed altercations involving items and non-items, fists and words. My own child experienced bullying, and I'm not sure how to fix this problem that we have, but it is a problem, and it is one that I'm seeing at the elementary and the middle school level, not just the high schools. And if we could figure out where that problem in the link is to making sure that everyone understands what the policy is and that it's equal amongst all the schools, I can't see that ever being a bad thing. Um, I think that we are only in trouble as a district when we think that we are perfect, as long as we are constantly looking at what we can improve, we're on the right track. Um, and one of our amazing speakers um, said today, music is math, and it reminded me of a quote that I'm going to kind of paraphrase for you guys, um, music is math, music is reading, it's science, it's history, it's art, it's even fine motor, physical education, music is a world within itself with a language that we all understand. I wish I could find the full quote online, I was trying to look, that was the best I had, but it was something that I used to actually have a poster of, and I think that we could all remember that music is universal. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
I just want to wish everybody a good last few days of uh, summer break, and remind everybody on Thursday to come to the Nashua Back to School Night. Um, I know parking can be a little bit of a challenge down at the library when the entirety of the district shows up, but there's plenty of parking on Temple Street- the district shows up, but there's plenty of parking on Temple Street, on, on the other side of that big pink building, I forget what it's called, but there's parking all up and down the street there. It's really worthwhile to be able to go and meet your child's teacher, if you, even if you don't need supplies at teacher, I'm sorry, principal and vice principal. And also, and Dante. My kid will be there volunteering because all of the, many of the high school sports require their athletes to volunteer that night, which is nice because then kids get to see other kids doing good things. But there's also a lot of community agencies that go to Back to School Night. There'll be forms there for free and reduced lunch, but then there'll also be people there from other after-school and community resources that families might want to be aware of and maybe take advantage of as the school year goes on. So, please come, it's super fun. And there's like glue sticks and stuff. Oh, there's books. Is this NTU doing books? And the NTU is giving out books. We love books.
Dr. Claffey?
I just want to thank everyone here from the wonderful, dedicated, gifted, passionate music community and for all children and obviously for our two sons, who you shaped their lives forever in a good way.
Thank you. So, thank you for everyone who came out to speak tonight. Thank you, administration, for being diligent on collaborating with different groups. I want to particularly thank Katrina because she actually volunteered an intern for me at Symphony New Hampshire when she, when she was working there. And of course, Mrs. Olson sent me tons of volunteers to all of our events as well because those are really great kids that always want to get involved in things in the community as well. I think this is actually a great thing that we're having this discussion. The timing, not perfect, but I think that this is a challenge and discussion is an opportunity for maybe that we can add more student choice and more flexibility at the elementary school level. And then we have some opportunities for some cross-curriculum study. As these discussions are developing and happening, I think we should also recognize that there's going to need to be some compromise probably in, if we want to be able to do those kinds of things and meet kids where they're at and meet all of their needs and different things. That UA teachers, classroom teachers, administration are probably going to have to be flexible on scheduling opportunities for, I guess, like cross-curriculum work. If that's the direction we want to go with this. And there's an opportunity for change and growth. So I hope that we can get there and I think it's actually going to make the school district stronger ultimately, as though it's stressful right now, but I think it's actually going to be a really good opportunity.
Johnson?
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's been a long meeting. I'm freezing here. Just want to let everybody know I've been freezing all night long. I've been drinking water with ice in it, of course. It's just one of these nights. I just want to say that music was a part of my life. And as you can tell, I don't have a New England accent, I have a New York accent. I was very lucky when I grew up. I didn't play the French horn, but I played the recorder, I played the piano, and I played the flute. I was lucky, I went to Juilliard School of Music and so did my sister. My dear partisister also went to the High School of Music and Arts. So music was a big part of our family and I learned a lot. And we used to go to Lincoln Center. So that was my life back before I moved up here to New Hampshire. But I was engrossed in the culture down there that a lot of our students and a lot of people up here never had a chance to enjoy, like I guess I did. My mother made me go, you know? I did dance and everything. But I look back at it now and I see what it has done for me. But again, I didn't do the French horn. I don't even play the piano anymore, the flute, but I had that opportunity in my life. And I'd like to see our students in Nashua to be able to enjoy and have the opportunity in music. Thank you.
Ms. Odin?
Yes, I, I want to thank all of you for coming. I, I never played an instrument, but I, I absolutely loved music. It was part of, part of my upbringing. I, I thank Dr. Andre for sitting down with so many of you today to try to work something out. I think this is critical for our kids. I know these people at the Department of Justice have no idea how important this is, that they've eliminated so much for these children. I've read multiple articles about how important music is to learning. The connections are strong and I, I hope there is some way that we can work together and find a resolve to this to benefit our students. Because we're about education, that's about learning, and music is part of that. So, thank you all for coming and hopefully we can have some type of a, a resolution to this so that our children will benefit from the rewards of playing an instrument or reading music. So thank you all so much.
Ms. Gilio?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who came tonight. And I also am just feeling, like I said earlier, more optimistic that we're going to be able to find a solution to this. And I think that it's, it's nice that we can all work together this way. It makes me happy to be on the Board of Education. So thank you all.
Thank you. I know I, I spoke a lot about my feelings about the music program in the schools. She has already left, but the, the fairgrounds, Ms. So when she was telling her story, I thought she was talking about me. That was my story growing up. And I have to tell you that it was Mr. Coronas who was my chorus teacher that got me up on stage first. And we did Allstate and all, what was it, All-New England and what, Amer, when we did the Stomp. It was just a lot of stuff. So, so if you're all mad that I have a voice now and confidence, it's Mr. Coronas's fault. So take it. And then I realized many laters, many years after, I had my first, my first two children, I'm not planning on having anymore, on having my two children whom I named Julia and Oliver. And I had no idea how much the chorus program meant to me until I ran into Elm Street and said, oh, Ms. Oliver Bab. And she said, oh, no, it's Ms. Oliver now. And I said, oh my God, I named my kids after my chorus teacher. But I, I really, I, I can't speak more highly to what the music program did. For me as a student, all of my friends were all band kids. They weren't just in band, but they were, you know, in the after-school, not after-school, they were garage bands, you know? And they played at all the talent shows. And we did the, this, what was it, Empty Bowls. They came and performed and some of them still think they're going to be rock stars. I'm not going to say who they are, but we know who they are. We have Grammy winners. In addition to all of the athletic scholars that we have had out of the national school system, but I don't think we often get to highlight what the music department creates and puts out into the adult community because we just aren't typically an arts-focused society. You know, we're not, you know, basketball players and baseball stars get, get the movies made after them. But if there is one thing that I 100% support, it is, it is Nashua's music program and to not just continue on as it is, but to continue to build into an even better, stronger, more advanced program. I know my son is huge into the instrument, even though he says he's not, but he did the, the five-day band camp over at UNH and loved it. He, he said he was bored, but he wasn't. And he, he has an ear, he can pick up any instrument and start playing. He listens to something on YouTube and sits down at a piano and starts dinging it out. I don't know how he does it. But it's just, we have to find what kids are interested in and where their hook is and we have to keep going with that. And that's math, science, music, sports. And we have an amazing opportunity with this district. We don't have all of the funding that we all the time want, but we certainly have a budget where we can be flexible and grow into those, those certain areas. But I just want to say, thank you to you guys and Mr. Coronas, thank you to you. That was, gosh, five years ago that we were in high school. Not the 30 that was referenced earlier. But with that, I want to say thank you and I want to acknowledge administration for coming back to the table and, and working with us on kind of getting this back on track. I appreciate it. And with that, I think I've said the last word, except for the ones that. Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. No, 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 we have a non-public. A non-public.
Motion for non-public. Ah, sorry. Okay, you guys can go, we'll come up with, with non-public. So I need a motion to go into non-public.
Tell moved.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Wait, wait, wait. We have to do roll call?
I can't hear what the motion was to write down the number.
Go into non-public under personnel? What is it?
I don't know what it is. And what are we going under? Personnel?
Wait. A32A.
I apologize, y'all, but I have a work shift that starts in.
No, it's A. Wait, I don't, I don't know which one it is. Is it?
We had time.
It's C. C is the reputation? Yeah, so that's A. Okay, A.
All right.
Money. Okay. So, the motion is to go into non-public under 93A32A. All those in favors? Wait, who made the motion and who seconded it?
I seconded.
Ms. Johnson made it, Ms. Brown seconded.
I made it second.
So we have to do roll call. Do you want to do roll call?
Wait, Ms. Brown seconded it?
Yep.
Okay, I just, it was so loud, I didn't hear anything and I.
That's okay, I figured we were just.
Trying to catch up. Okay. Wait, I got to write down the time too.
I am freezing.
Yeah, 9:43.
You got the bag though.
9:43. Okay. Ms. Darling is gone. I'm a yes. Mr. Claffey's?
Sure.
Yes. Ms. Brown? Wait, did we turn off the recorder?
No.
Not yet, we have to go, we have to finish the vote.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
All right, so we're at non-public at 9:43 PM.